Okay.
It tends to look better if you flick it around. Carefully place it.
I usually.
Hello.
Hello.
It didn't stay, that's why.
Need a blanket.
That's why I'm off one.
If I'm what?
Visiting community development. Responding to my email address.
Yes.
So.
I would love to. Yeah. I would love to.
Tell me that's just not my eyesight going bad.
Oh, my God.
It already is bad.
No, we only got him last week.
Tell me that's not, that isn't clear.
So I can throw some dates out and you can take them back when you know.
Okay. You can take a picture of those and then I'll respond to you.
Yeah, so you said midday or beginning of day?
Yeah.
You need one of those words you're asking.
Excellent. Thirty-one, ten, one oh five. He better. Or no, I'll take.
Whatever you want.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
Somebody else was like, well, you guys can RFP that out. And I remember when they did it, I mean, I've worked on several special projects, but I remember one guy doing it and he did trade the date when they had people carrying who was that, who was after that, a Tony.
If everyone will take your seat, we'll get started. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the City Council Study Session for Monday, February 12th. Our first agenda item is the police building updates. Public Works interim Director Larry Nemo and Donovan Nolan from CBRE will be present to provide an update on Inglewood Police Department Headquarters Building Replacement Project. Good evening, Mr. Nemo.
So uploading the PowerPoint right now, it didn't get, it didn't get sent up right.
Okay.
Because that's what Donovan's doing at the moment. Although I believe you all have a copy of what he's going to present.
Use the microphone, please.
So, well, he's doing that. Let me kind of go through a couple of things real quick. Good evening, appreciate the opportunity to provide you an update. As best I could tell, the last time, last update was provided on October 2nd of last year, so we do want to apologize for the long gap. That was not our plan. One of the things I'll let you know is that we are working right now on creating some better communication.
I don't hear it. You might have to. Are any of the mics working?
No.
Check, check, check.
Hello, hello. Hello, hello.
Are they working yet? Oh, mine is now. Is yours? Okay.
Check, check.
All right. Sounds like maybe we're ready to go.
Try again, Larry.
Now, if you'll please repeat everything.
So, good evening, council. I'm Larry Nemo, I'm interim director of Public Works. I'm here tonight, well, we're here tonight, Vance Bradshaw and Donovan, to provide you an update on the police building construction. As I was saying, last update, as far as I can tell, was presented on October 2nd. What?
You just called him Bradshaw, it's Vance Fender. Sorry, Larry.
It's one of those evenings.
It is one of those evenings, isn't it? So, anyway. Got it? Okay. So, we do want to apologize for the long gap, but you all know where the circumstances. One of the things we did want to let you know is we are changing, we're going to start increasing our communications through the web page, Facebook, Instagram. As a matter of fact, if you'll check those, you'll see some aerial pictures now. Some people are helping us out with that. And then we also have a project update we'll be, we're going to try to produce at least every two to three weeks, so we get good look ahead, see what's happened and what's coming up. If we need to do more, we'll do more. We're just kind of working through these right at the moment. You know, we've got a really strong team, the police department, CBRE, Adolphson Peterson, BLR, so we've got a really strong group that's committed to get this project done and get it done on time. One thing I did want to do is I wanted to apologize to, council members inquested that I didn't have good information for you last week when I was doing the, the other one. Yes, you had an older budget sheet and it shouldn't have been in there. I have reviewed the January 31st budget sheet. They didn't have it at the time when I put the packet together. And we did have $200,000, $543 in there, so the $68,000, so we'll be reallocating $132, excuse me, $132,000 back into that. Thank you. Okay, so I do apologize for that, I didn't catch that. Taken over a lot of things, they're working very hard with me to bring me up to speed, but it's a lot of knowledge you've had to gather very, very quickly. And I'm actually getting pretty, I've gotten pretty good at the moment, so I'm, I'm starting to learn where to look for everything. So, with that being said, I did want to apologize because I didn't like, I don't like that. So, I want to turn it over to Donovan with CBRE. He will do the project update and it will be available for any questions you might want to ask afterwards.
Slide this over here, so.
Good evening, Donovan Nolan, CBRE. Thanks for having me again tonight. We will provide a quick update on the project, just kind of talk through things. You guys have, have seen the package a little bit, so I'm sure there may be some additional questions there. But we'll be fairly brief. Hey, look at that.
It came off.
We will be, I'll be fairly brief on my updates and just kind of give you some, some high level details there, so. We'll kind of go through the construction update. As, as Larry mentioned, there is some nice photos that we're going to be putting on the, on the web pages and everything like that, and I put a couple in here as well. And then we're going to kind of talk on the overall schedule of things, talk about what we recently went through with our furniture RFP process, kind of what's next and what's expected down the road with that. And then the last piece will be kind of our budget update, where, where things are sitting now, and then kind of what we're expecting over the next 30 days, when hopefully I come back again to present again for you guys, so. Construction update, design is complete. There is still some minor modifications we're working through, some door changes, things like that, just to make sure we're getting the right swings and the right locations and make sure, you know, the, the villains are secured properly, if you will. And the, there is some, some glass and some wall modifications. We're just talking through a bunch of stuff just to make sure we're getting everything right within most efficient building and the, and the best paying for our buck, so. Excel did complete their work of the relocation of the power line, which is kind of right where, on the left side of that picture, the Bobcat, there was an old power line that ran right down the center of that parking lot. We had to get them to relocate that around the outside, so that way the existing building could still be operational. So that did complete at the end of the new year and that was critical for us. It did delay from the original plan that they had, just for general knowledge of public or anyone else building with Excel, they're about six months lead time. We started in July, the conversations, and it obviously took them five months to complete for us here, so. AMP did mobilize the following Monday. You can see kind of the, it was the fencing and then all of a sudden dirt moving. We started our caissons, which on the right-hand side is, the first caisson, it was a weird exposure on, on the picture there, but that was the one that I ended up for that, that showed the most, so I do apologize there. But that was our first caisson, it went about 62 feet down into the ground. Right now, we have 23 out of the 102-ish, I think it's 102, maybe 103 caissons complete. Quick math is roughly 25 percent, so we're, we're moving along pretty good there. I shouldn't say pretty good, it's actually a pretty slow process because of the depth. Average depth is 60 to 65 feet. We did have a couple last week that went over 70 feet, but, you know, it's about 10, 10 yards of concrete per caisson, just for some random numbers, if you guys want to pass that around, you can, so. We are getting like two to three caissons today. We did get a newer rig that's bigger, that's hopefully speeding things up to get us up to three or four caissons, which ultimately helps out with our overall schedule since this is the most critical part. We are starting the grade beams, which, next week, so you'll start seeing some horizontal foundation layouts happening as you, as you drive by the site. But overall, as you drive by, you can see it's pretty crowded and a lot of activity going on around there, so fun stuff. Overall schedule, I did mention that foundation work, it will carry us into April. The building slab itself, which is the flatwork in, on the floors, that's going to start right after that. Then we'll start going vertical with our structural steel and our masonry walls, with the finishes really starting kind of June timeframe, which is the interior framing and all that fun stuff inside. And substantial completion right now is scheduled for, and this is the first phase for January 18th of 2019. Then we start the demo and the move out and removal of, removal of any owner items that need to be relocated and Phase Two starts and, and then that completion is expected roughly June or July of 2019 for the parking lot and everything there. We are still working on moving that date up. There's a lot of coordination between Phase One and Phase Two, that'll happen, but that's just kind of where we're sitting right now, based on the, the actual delay of Excel, it kind of pushed things there, so. Jumping into the furniture RFP process, most of you, a couple new, haven't been with us on the recommend, or how we went through our other RFPs, this was a, a qualification and proposal process. The qualifications were standard furniture, making sure that we meet the requirements of, of quality for, for this type of building and the long-term quality control of that. We also wanted to make sure the company was reputable, I mean, it was, went through all the procurement processes that the city requires. We had nine total respondents, shortlisted to four, which are the four on the screen, the four boxes. Those four firms we visited did site interviews and tours. They were focused, the tours were supposed to be focused specifically on the quality of the furniture, and what each vendor provided was what we call a good, better and best value, showing us three options, if you will, to give us a price range of where they would fit for all of the furniture we need for the spaces, workstations, conference room furniture, chairs, things like that. So, we got a good idea for where our budget sits and that's kind of, that was one of the scoring criterias, was how their good, better, best pricing fitted, fit within each other. But as you can see in the end, Office Capes came out with the highest score during the interview process. Their pricing was near, near the bottom, I guess, the most competitive, best way you want to say that. So, it fits in with our, our best value to the project and to the client and to the, the taxpayers as well, so. Right now, there's no recommendation for a value to be approved, that'll happen later on down the road. Right now, we're, the staff and Larry and Eric, when available, are, we're sitting through furniture meetings, which are always fun. If you guys would like to join, I can definitely send an invite out. Picking out, you know, the intricacies of a workstation for, you know, what commander, fender might need for a desk drawer or anything like that. So it, it gets pretty, pretty intense with some of the details, but then what they do from there is then they, they build that, that, that cost sheet and they have a budget they have to work within, which is on the next page, you guys, fits within that. And then, and then we bring that proposal and that, that purchase order to you guys for approval, basically, so. So, right now, there's no cost, it's just, here's the process through that qualification and proposal process that we went through in competitiveness. Office Capes was the recommended and is proceeding with the design, so. Next piece is the budget, just kind of doing snapshots of line items. I know Larry mentioned a couple of things, and we, we are reallocating within line items. As things are getting bought out, we're moving things to and from contingency, if that makes sense, so that way we're still staying within our $27 million number. And that, that contingency line item is kind of the fluid one that, that we manipulate between certain buyouts that we have to get through, so. The geotech, or the material testing that you can kind of see right here is 68, we did have a higher number, that number got moved down into the project contingency, things like that. So that's kind of, if you recall the last time, which I think was December, that you may have saw this, so the new members, you obviously would have been the first time. This kind of gives you that snapshot of where we're at today versus then, and then our committed costs on the right-hand column, so. Next 30 days, construction obviously will continue, being earthwork and foundations being the biggest piece. You will start seeing some underground utilities happening, that's, you know, the plumbing and the electrical getting from transformers and from the streets and, and water lines, things like that, so. That, that's kind of the, the high point in construction. The vendor procurement, we still have our low voltage, data cabling and AV package, excuse me, and that should be going out within the next two weeks. It'll follow the same process that we've been doing with our other RFQPs, they have to meet a qualification score first and then obviously the proposal piece comes with the current design package there, so. The completion of our security drawings, there's a lot of information that we've been working closely with the police staff, that should be completed as well. There is a, an ongoing vendor that we utilize there, so there's actually not a, a RFP process. They will give us a proposal and then we'll make sure it fits within our budget from the, what we need there, so. That kind of wraps up who the vendors will be for the next 30 days. I think it may carry into the March timeframe as well, just for the completion, but my guess is that by the end of March, there's at least going to be a recommendation for a contract between those two vendors, so. Just kind of giving you the, the heads up for that. And with that kind of information, that wraps up the presentation and the update. Happy to take questions and see if I can answer any open items that may be, may be carried over from last week, so.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we greatly appreciate all that you're doing. Great, thank you so much.
Thank you very much for taking over the job that you've taken over. I know it's been a. Take your timeline updates.
Yep. And we will be back in a month, on the 26th.
Wonderful.
Okay. The next agenda item is to comprehensive plan check-in. Community development planner John Voberl is here to discuss Inglewood Forward indicators and recommended strategies and work programs. And I see Mr. Stitt is with him. Welcome, gentlemen.
Thank you. I just wanted to start with a few introductory comments about the comprehensive plan for the sake of our new mem-
Except picking you both up, maybe sitting next to each other.
For the sake of our new members and also for the audience. Comprehensive plan is a document that's designed to drive public policy in terms of traditional elements within the plan itself, would be transportation, housing, business, land use, utilities, recreation. And the idea is to provide a very broad range of options for the development of a community. A comprehensive plan is not law, it's policy. It's designed to guide council in decision-making for the development of the community. It's an advisory document as, as such, since it's not law, it's policy, it can be reviewed on a periodic basis. In fact, the way this, this particular comprehensive plan is designed is, provides a five-year review to see how the development of the community has occurred. And the reason for the five-year time span is because the nature of development in the community is, is driven by a number of factors. Certainly the economy, public policy plays a part into that, the regulatory environment, and it takes a bit of time for the policies within a comprehensive plan to express themselves in the community. So, it would take a couple of years at least before you could begin to see the changes. Now, within the plan itself, we also have a yearly review on a number of key indicators to look at exactly where we're going, and that gives us a better picture when we take a look at the five-year score, if you will, of where the community has gone relative to the goals and objectives within the plan. It's, again, it's an advisory document and, as you know, the Planning Commission Council spent a great deal of time reviewing the document and we think that it, it adequately presents policy directions for the community, for its growth and development, for the next 10, 15, 20 years. The broad horizon for a comprehensive plan is necessary because it is, it is a, a general document, it does not specify individual actions on a very granular level. It's, it's, it's designed to be the 30,000-foot view of the community and the direction in which development, based on community input and council review, is set forth. And with that, I'll turn it over to John.
Good evening, council members. It's about a year ago today, this month, that the Inglewood Forum, the 2016 Inglewood Comprehensive Plan was adopted by council on February 21st, 2017. Part four, realizing the plan of the comprehensive plan, calls for an annual review of indicator data points and analysis of desire and actual trend lines. And also calls for selecting strategies and developing complementary work program projects that address these divergent trend lines. Our first step was to go to Planning and Zoning Commission in a study session, which is on May 16th, 2017. And we, I have some attachments to the main memo. First off, you, you have this chart, and then followed that was the strategies that were picked out of the comprehensive plan that were correlated to these, this chart and the proposed work program items as they were presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission, which did concur with those recommended projects. And now the baton is being passed here to City Council. So I just, at this point, would like to just kind of talk about this chart that was included with the main memo. This is the indicator chart, so on the left-hand side column, you have the name of the indicator. Next to that, to the right, is the original data points from 2014, when the Inglewood Comprehensive Plan was kicked off. The sec, the next column to the right is the most current data that we could glean from various sources, such as the American Community Survey five-year estimates, from our GIS system, from some commercial retail websites like Esri, Trulia, WalkScore, and also from the city's financial services. The next column is the desired trend line, and so that could be either, we would like to see a decrease in those data points or an increase, or maybe we'd like to see it stay steady. And then the next column over that, next to that, is the actual trend line, and I have color-coded those kind of like with a traffic signal. So, green is where the actual trend line is matching with our desired trend line, so that's good. The yellow is kind of flashing, kind of caution, so it's, it's, so we have a few of those, we have bike routes in terms of miles and bike lanes have not increased since 2014, they're flat. However, we are addressing that, right now we have some projects that are being designed, including Dartmouth and Oxford Avenue, and there's a kind of wrapping up, and so we may be able to address that next year. The other one down lower is net sales tax revenue. Now, we actually had an increase from 2014 to 2015, 16, that was healthy, but we, and we have a little asterisk next to that because we still realize that the city does have potential challenges in this area. And this is because of the changing economy, the way people shop, a lot of e-commerce is happening, the sharing economy, and at the same time, costs are continually rising in certain areas faster and faster, such as insurance. And, and then of course, you just, it's hard to predict what will happen in the economy over time. So, we still think that this is something that we should be very concerned about and watchful and have some things in the pi, project pipeline to, to kind of help going forward with that. And then there are some, a few things that were colored red, those are danger, so, drive alone, people driving alone to work, we've seen increase there, and with carpooling, we've seen a decrease. And this is probably due to such a full employment economy, lots of people are working, more people are working, and that's probably why those things have increased a bit. And then the, probably the most serious area where we have a red with increases is the median housing value and housing affordability. And as everyone probably knows, housing prices have, with, with a very tight inventory for sale, housing prices have really gone through the roof and affordability is a big issue. And we're seeing that all over the metro area, and a lot of communities are grappling with that right now. So now I'd like to move on. We then, just going back to the Planning and Zoning Commission, we, we let them know what our current strategy, work program, what we have going right now. Of course, we have accessory dwelling units, we also have a number of quick win bicycle projects that were identified in the Inglewood Walk and Wheel Master Plan, and those are Oxford Avenue and Dartmouth Avenue. And we were also able to complete the Clarkson Street Sheros Project, which I believe was about a year ago. We also are working on historic preservation. Council decided to go ahead and, and establish a historical preservation commission, and I believe that's off the ground and running, and they're kind of feeling their way as to what direction they want to go. And then finally, we, we also were able to get this grant from the Urban Land Institute to do the Healthy Corridors Project. And that took place the very last day, I believe, last few days of the January. And today I saw the city, over the e-notifier system, sent a, an email that had a, a link to the video of the final presentation. All right, so that, now let's get into the proposed strategies and work program items. So, there are six of proposed work program items, and they are strongly influenced by the indicator data, particularly the housing data, and also the city's sales tax data. Okay, so I'm just gonna, I'm just gonna kind of name them off and then go by, one by one and talk about each of them. So the first one, we have the Citywide Housing Needs Assessment and Action Plan. We have the Light Rail Corridor Transit Oriented Development Small Area Plan. The Downtown Medical and Inglewood Station District's Art Signage and Wayfinding Plan. Initial exploration of a downtown medical and Inglewood Station Business District Improvement, Business Improvement District or a Downtown Development Authority.
Bless you.
Bless you. And we also, we also have the Brookridge Area Capital Improvements Need Identification and Cost Estimate Study, and this is the Kmart site. And finally, we have the Medical District Comprehensive Plan Transition Area Small Area Planning Process. And I will go through each of those items in more detail. First off, the Citywide Housing Needs Assessment and Action Plan. So there are a number of different things that are going on that are, that we believe are pushing us in this direction. Number one, we are seeing stronger housing demand in Inglewood than we have seen in a long time. We've also, we know that demographic changes are coming down the pipeline. Baby boomers are aging, and eventually many of them will not be able to stay in their single-family homes. They will, they will not want, either not want to because of all the work and maintenance, or they may not be able to take care of themselves anymore. And so, we believe that there's going to be a large shifting and, and transition of, of the ownership and the makeup of the single-family housing stock. Inglewood has a long tradition of, of being a place where seniors are welcome, and, and we have a lot of, we've had a lot of senior housing facilities in Inglewood throughout our history, both private and public, and there is probably, there's very, it's pretty a good bet that we will see more proposals from either the Inglewood Housing Authority or from the private sector to build retired, senior retirement housing in the community. Another magnet that we have in the community is the hospitals, that, that's something that seniors like to be close to as well. So who's going to buy these homes from the baby boomers? So who's going to buy these homes from the baby boomers? Well, they're, it's going to have to be millennials. And millennials will be forming families over the next few decades. But there's still some challenges with that, in the fact that we will be in competition for millennials from other cities that are around us, in terms of housing quality, housing size, and housing rehabilitation and remodeling costs. So the, I also want to mention, and then the other factor that's coming into play with this is that we have experienced a reduced scope of city rehab and remodeling programs due to staffing retirements and community development, as well as some financing challenges that were outlined in the memo. So the objectives of this Citywide Housing Needs Assessment and Action Plan, the most, the main, the main objective, the most important objective is to strengthen and reboot our traditional city housing rehab and remodeling programs. Additional purposes for this study could also involve identification of programs to strengthen single-family homeownership, to provide an assessment of the housing stock condition and housing stock demand, to provide an assessment of housing product types and the ideal housing product mix. We could also identify potential zoning regulation reforms in certain areas of the community, and identify missing middle housing types and recommended policies and strategies surrounding those types. We could also provide an assessment of affordable and workforce housing needs and recommend policies and strategies. And finally, we may be able to identify strategies to address homelessness issues within the Moving to the Light Rail Corridor Transit Oriented Development Small Area Plan, this is a follow-up to the planning work developed in the Inwood Light Rail Corridor Stationary Master Plan and the Inwood Light Rail Corridor Next Step Study. Objectives for this project would be to refine the division, the vision that was laid out in the original master plan on a block-by-block basis with area property and business owners, in order to develop transit-oriented zoning overlay disagreements. That would be added to selected portions of existing industrial zone districts around the Oxford and Inwood Light Rail stations. And potentially look at a potential rezoning of the Hampton Avenue corridor on the south side from industrial to business, as there are no longer any industrial uses on that corridor. Turning to the Downtown Medical and Inwood Station District's Art Signage and Wayfinding Plan, this is a low-hanging, quick-win project built, that builds on recent improvements made along South Broadway. The objectives would be to make Inwood commercial area a more appealing experience that will attract more people to the area. Is a low-cost rebranding plan to improve and unify art, signage, and wayfinding throughout the downtown district, the medical district, and city center Inwood. Then turning to the initial exploration of Downtown Medical and Inwood Station Business Improvement District, or a Downtown Development Authority. This was another thing that was a strategy that was identified in the Inwood Light Rail Next Step Study. And this would represent some baby steps to explore or compare potential strategies for Inwood's core commercial districts. The objectives would be to assist the city with choosing a preferred organizational and planning tool model for future planning in the city's key commercial districts. It would give the city a choice between a Business Improvement District and a Downtown Development Authority, which then would set the stage for the various types of strategies that can be pursued under each tool. And then moving to the Brookridge Area Capital Improvements Needs Identification Cost Estimate Study. This is, this is being driven by the Kmart closing, which provides the city with challenges as well as an opportunity. The objectives would be to continue dialogue with the Kmart property owners, as well as do an assessment of the infrastructure needs and deficiencies that may be needed to be addressed by the city in order to successfully attract a high-quality anchor to the former Kmart site. And finally, the last one would be the Medical District Comprehensive Plan Transition Area Small Area Planning Process. And this one was driven by the recent PUD application that was north of the hospital district. So in the comprehensive plan, the medical district shows that there is, outlines a transitionary zone that is just north of the main medical campus in the thirty-three-hundred block between the medical campus and the residential neighborhoods to the north. And this was identified as a kind of a transition zone where the city might want to look at some different zoning reforms. And somebody sooner rather than later jumped the gun and wanted to make some changes there and wanted to rezone, I believe, his three parcels. The Inwood Planning and Zoning Commission recommended against doing that, they would prefer to take a more comprehensive viewpoint for the entire transition area zone. And they would like to do a small area plan process with the property and resident, property owners and residents in the area to have a dialogue about what changes might be desirable and maybe do a potential rezoning that would be more uniform and not be just one little portion of a block. So at this point, I'd just like to now throw this open to council. And what we would, what we are kind of looking for tonight is, so we've outlined these six different proposed projects. And we would like to hear from each council member which of these projects that they are really in support of, that they would like to see move forward with the Planning and Zoning Commission. And also, we'd like to hear if there are any, if council feels that any of these projects, that they're not comfortable moving forward at this time with any of these projects. And so now I would like to throw it open to city council.
Councilmember Olson.
Thank you. Is that working okay? Yeah, okay. I have, I just have, thank you for this. I, I got very excited by it. I think the comprehensive plan has some really wonderful, rich ideas in it that can give us some great guidelines for the future. So I'm really excited to talk about it again. I have a couple of questions about a few things. One is on the, it's under the first analysis for the Citywide Housing and Assessment Action Plan on the, on the top of the second page. Well, that whole sentence about large numbers of single-family homes changing hands, do we have a, some data on that? I don't think that was in the data point, was it? Like, do we know how mu, how large that number is?
No, we, we don't have that, but it probably would be possible to, to dig that data up from the assessors' data. They have sales data at time, and I could probably go back at the heart of the Great Recession and figure, and figure out how many homes changed hands, if that's something you would like.
I would think that might be helpful to all of us, but I don't want to make someone do work that the rest of us don't believe is that useful. I think it might help tell the story of what we're, what we're managing and what we're trying to navigate into the future. And the, it feels like it's swiftly happening in some areas and others maybe not, but sometimes people have said to me, why do anything? You know, not every, just leave it the, everything the way it is. It's already changing. And some neighborhoods maybe haven't as much.
Just as an anecdote, during the Great Recession, I decided to move to Inwood in two thousand ten.
Good choice. Welcome.
And the way I, the way I went out and to do, look for houses was as I rode my bike down every street and wrote down every address that had a for-sale sign. And at that time, there was probably typically a half a dozen for-sale signs on every block. And now you don't see any.
Yeah. Well, I, I, do others want that kind of data? It would seem like it would tell the story. If you don't want it, I don't want to make them dig it all up.
Well, okay.
I'm asking, so that's my one question. Next one is on the page on the Light Rail Corridor Transit Oriented Development Small Area. The, the, second to the last paragraph on the much, much of the Light Rail Corridor, the last part here is talking about property owners may be offered the chance to add transit-oriented development to their list of potential land uses through the Small Area Planning Process. Boundaries for the transit overlay zone would then be established on property signatures. How does, how does this work? And would this be similar to what we were looking at with the medical district, where we made some changes there in terms of the number of meetings with pictures and things like that, and number of open houses? Is that how we'd get it kicked off?
Yes, it would be very similar to the Downtown Medical District Small Area Planning Process, so very extensive public outreach.
Okay. Because some people are nervous about this already. I think that, I just want to get it on record, there's going to be an extensive, long-range kind of process with this one.
Yes.
And then the, the next one, Initial Exploration of a Business Improvement District. We need some key champions in this. And do we, have we so far, I mean, I was at the ULI presentation last week, which I thought was phenomenal, but how, how does that start? Do we have some champions? We're talking about a much larger bid area. Do we have some champions that are, that got excited by it that day? Do you know? You don't have to name them yet, but do you think there, there are some? And could this, because this, could this take off soon?
Well, I think, I think one of the major keys would be the hospitals.
Yeah.
And there are some new people there, so.
Yeah, I know.
That might be, it changed, be a little bit different response, maybe we would cross our fingers.
Okay. I'm, I'm asking some of these to help decide what my, what my top ones are versus low-hanging fruit versus, going to take a little bit more time. Okay, that's, that's helpful, thanks.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you. Thanks for talking about this with us. It's really cool to hear an update after all that work we did kind of putting it together. I'm also really pleased to see the numbers as it relates to homeownership, that that's increased. That's, that's pretty exciting. I have a couple of questions. With what councilmember Olson said, those, the, those data points would be helpful for me also to see. But with the.
The sales or the changing of hands?
Yes, yes. With the commercial strategy around the Kmart property, that study, would that be conducted by planning and zoning or with community development or who? Or would that be a third party? What are we thinking for that? Or do we know yet?
The Planning and Zoning Commission would be involved, but we probably would want to seek some outside assistance, probably some consulting assistance, some engineering, a skill set and cost estimate, estimate ability.
Hello.
Just a quick add-on to that. Good evening there, members of council. We could also, if there's a, if there's an emerging redevelopment group for that property, would also try to partner with them to not only absorb costs but understand the scope of a project, because that would obviously directly derive the infrastructure that would be required to support it.
Great. And my question was just relating to mostly timeline. I know that's been vacant a while, and I would just hate to see it vacant for a really long time. So I guess my question was more relating to kind of how long something like that might take, if we don't have any folks that are really excited about redeveloping that right now.
Can you hold the microphone and send it to the other one?
I think we could look at this, this assessment two ways. One way is we could do some internal estimation, work with public works and other departments to look at what generally we think would be required, given maybe some scenarios. So that's one option that we could do, that we'd probably do largely in-house. The other option, as I mentioned, is if there's somebody who is emerging and wants to redevelop the property, and they have a specific plan around that, then at that point, we would partner with them to try to figure out the specific infrastructure elements that we would need to create in order to support that new development.
Okay, so we have some options there.
Indeed.
Okay, great. And I guess that's also my question for the Housing Needs Assessment Plan. Would that also start with planning and zoning, or where do you imagine that would start?
They would also be involved with that. But once again, we're looking for some expertise that we don't have in the housing world. We know that a lot of other communities in the metro are currently doing planning work with consultants that are, that are experts in housing. And so that's probably where we would want to go to in order to see if there's a way that we don't, we're not aware of, that we could boost these housing programs in the city.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, city manager.
And with that housing assessment question, I've actually just been approached by Sheridan, city manager. He is desirous also of doing a housing needs assessment and wanted to partner with us because he saw this was on our comprehensive plan list as well. So it may be an opportunity if we join together and maybe able to get a better price on a, on a housing needs assessment, but that's something they want to do as well because they're at a point in their comprehensive plan to do that as well.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Barrantyne.
I think Littleton was just in the process of doing that.
They are.
I think, sorry with the cold. I think Littleton just did one as well, or is in the process of still doing one, so we might want to take a look at what they, what they did with that. When did the rezoning for the Pearl Street area, when was that discussed with planning and zoning?
Well, they, there was a PUD application, and they had a public hearing, and they did not recommend that you adopt it. And then.
Right, and then we didn't adopt it. And so there's such a short timeframe, I was just wondering when they discussed that because we just turned that down. And now you're saying that there's already some desire to go ahead and rezone that area. I was not aware of that. When did, I'm just asking, when they discussed it? You said they were looking at it and redo zoning.
I can't remember what stage session that was.
Okay, because I'd like that information, because I wasn't able to listen to this at the very last meeting. I had trouble loading it, but they, we've only had, I think, two meetings, one meeting.
Could I give a point of information?
Since we, we voted it down. So if there's already something in the works on a plan, and it happened that fast, I'd like a little bit more information on it, because we just turned it down.
There's no plan. It's just, it's just an idea to pursue.
All right.
Okay.
Point of information.
Yeah, it was at the, at the meeting that they cho, that they decided to turn it down. They said very clearly, several reasons for the reason of no was that they wanted to do a rezoning. It was pretty clear that was why they said no. They thought it was a misfit. So I think it was that night, and they haven't talked, I haven't seen it on their agenda since then. So it's several months, several months back.
I think your, I think that's probably, that's, your memory is pretty good. I think that's probably what, where it was.
Well, that's what interested me. Thank you.
No, I listened to that meeting, and while they said that they would prefer it got to be a rezoning, when you did your presentation, you made it sound as if there was something in the works already to go ahead and move that forward. If that's my, a misinterpretation on my part, that's fine.
Yes, okay, I understand.
Because it didn't come out of that meeting, I listened to that several times. So if I could get more information on how.
It is a late add-on, based on that PUD rejection in that public hearing. So originally, that was not on the list, but we added on because we heard that sentiment from the Planning and Zoning Commission that they.
But you wouldn't have added it on before council declined it.
It's only added to this list for you to make the decision if you want to go forward with that. It's not a done deal by any stretch of the imagination.
Oh, we're not making any decisions tonight, but I mean, so. The other thing I had a question on is that you've got the, you've got the South Broadway and transition to large-scale retail with street, streetscape improvements and urban renewal district at Bellevue and Broadway. I didn't know we had an urban renewal district at Bellevue and Broadway.
We do not.
Okay, then I, I just, about stating that there's an urban renewal district at Bellevue and Broadway when we don't actually have one there. And I want to make sure that we understand, especially for the new people, the process that would be put in place in order to create an urban renewal district for that area is, is actually quite a process. And, and I don't want to give anybody the impression that it exists already.
So the, the mentioning of the urban renewal district is, is within a strategy in the comp plan. We are not proposing to do an urban renewal district there at this time.
Okay, then I guess for clarity's sake, you might want to take that out because it makes it sound like there already is one. Is the people who own Brookridge, aren't they the same people that own the Kmart property? Is the Kmart property now under all one?
Well, the Kmart property is a little bit of a different, different situation. It's, it's pretty analogous to some of the other Kmart's in the metro area in that there is an underlying ground owner, but they've signed a decades-long ground lease to an intermediary party that's in California that we're actually in touch with, because they have the operative control on the property through that long-term ground lease.
But at one point, it was my understanding that there were some multiple owners. It's all under one ownership at this point now.
The Kmart property itself is under one ownership. The other ownerships around the corner south at, at Broadway and Bellevue, that's multiple ownerships with those smaller properties that are out front.
What, on the Brookridge Shopping Center itself, on the east side?
Yeah, that's a separate ownership.
Yeah. Yeah. But was my understanding, there was, might, might have been some, okay, that's fine. And then what other expertise are you looking at to go ahead and make those determinations? Who, who are you looking at?
This is just, we're just proposing to look at infrastructure needs, that would be needed to attract a high-quality anchor, and we're just looking for engineers who can do cost estimates of these.
Is there any desire to do a blight study in that area?
Not at the start.
Or are you looking at any of the, whatever new name we call them now? Or we're not, that's not what you were referring to?
No, I think, I think the designation, or the potential designation of an urban renewal district in that area, as you alluded to, would require a great deal of study. And one of the things that that would entail is obviously the urban renewal authority coming to you to ask for authorization to do that. So the city council will be involved in very early discussions about providing any direction relative to assessment of a redevelopment district there. One of the things that I would recommend as the executive director of the urban renewal authority to them is not consider any type of request to you to even study an urban renewal possibility unless we know there was a substantial gap in what the community would find useful on that site, and the ability for it to be funded in terms of the amount of public improvements that would be required there. We wouldn't take that step unless there is some very careful consideration by both the urban renewal authority and by yourselves.
Well, I hope you can understand, it's confusing, because it's, it's in here, and it kind of already makes it sound like that piece is on there, as well as if you could provide the information on the area for Pearl Street, because during the presentation, it did sound like there was already some kind of more movement there than just thought for this. I mean, I'm not sure that that's something, that it comes to us to have these. I guess I'm a little confused at what you're kind of wanting to do, because you've got these little segments here, and you're just, you asked that you wanted to get buy-in from council on where you're moving forward, and I, I think that we don't have the kind of information that would really allow that kind of decision-making. That's very important, and very time-intensive, and creates a lot of energy. I mean, people purchase property and invest in property based off of what they think we're going to allow them to do, and so I don't want to mislead anybody by just kind of that we've got some nice ideas here, and that, and then people think that there's more grounding or more authority in what we're doing tonight in any of these pieces, so I'm a little concerned. On what exactly it is you're wanting, because you said that you wanted to get buy-in on what you wanted, pieces of this that you wanted us to move forward on, and I don't really have the kind of information that would allow that.
What kind of information would you need?
Well, I, like I pointed out, in, in, in the one section here, to, to call something an urban renewal district when it's not an urban renewal district, and you're not even considering having a blight study done, and you're not even considering moving in that direction, might give some of the, I mean, we already had Kmart come to us once, when we just took a tour around Kmart and said, hey, what are you doing over on our property? What's going on? So when any kind of interest like that, or conversation like that gets sparked, people get concerned, values go up or down, or properties get harder to sell or buy, so I'm just, I'm a little confused.
So as it relates to that specific property and that specific option? We haven't been contacted by any of the neighboring property owners about a concern. If we are, we'll clarify. The second thing that I would say relative to that is the ground holder, the leaseholder that's located in California. We've had discussions with them about the various options on that property, including the possibility of an urban renewal district, but we didn't at all promise that. We went very carefully through what would need to be happening relative to the direction from both the authority, and especially from the city council, to undertake that type of activity, and they understand that. And so we haven't had any, as I said, we haven't had anybody contact us with concerns. If they do, we'll sit down and talk to them about what, what is actually happening there, and what we would be doing with this infrastructure.
That's kind of what I'm saying, is that some of this is just kind of a little bit higher-level overview kind of stuff, and it seems as if you're asking for more authority to move forward on things, when it just seems that-
I think what our-
Not sure what you're wanting to move forward with. I was only using that piece as an example, and I appreciate the update with it, but I'm not sure what you're expecting.
What our objective was this evening was to reflect that these examples of, of implementation projects in the comprehensive plan came from the planning and zoning commission. They represented some of their priorities. I think as the director of the community development department, I think it's safe to say tonight that in 20, for the remaining part of 2018, it'd be very difficult for us as an organization, both with our staffing level and with our financial capabilities, to do all of these. So I think one of the things that we were looking for from you tonight was a sense of priority. And if you have a sense of priority of, of some of these things, then that gives us the ability to go back and develop the detail that we bring back for you for actual discussion about implementing some of these things. So if some of them, if, if some of them are not council priorities, we're okay with that. That makes sense. We just want to understand if you can form some, some discussion, some consensus around some of the things that are on this list, that we could and should move forward with on behalf of the community, that's what our objective was.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Questa.
Thank you. Starting at the, pardon me, starting at the annual indicators update, original being the year 2014, most current being 2015, 16. What is the span of time between those two? Do you know, was it January 1st, 2014 to mid-2016?
I believe, as, as my memory recalls, I believe that we kicked off the comprehensive plan in the fall of 2013. So more than, that was one of the first steps in the comprehensive plan development, was to create this indicators, these original indicator data points. So they are probably early 2014 is when they were collected.
Okay, and then the most current, what timeframe would that be from? I see 2015, excuse me, 2015, 2016. Can you pin it down any more than that?
I think that's how, as I recall, that's how the census, that's their nomenclatures. They do it in two years.
So at least a year passed, maybe two years passed then? Two years' worth of data we're talking about here? For instance, on the housing increases, are these two years' worth of housing increases? Is this a year, year and a half?
I think it's just a one point in time that I was able to go back and find my 2016 data, which was the, probably the latest I had, and, and that matched up with the census data time point. So yes, I would say they're probably 2016 numbers.
Okay. One of the ones that strikes me is carpool. Do you know if ride-sharing falls into that category? I would imagine so. And I'm surprised to see the carpool went down, because I would think Lyft and Uber became more frequently used from 2014 to 2015, 16. That's just more observational, but-
Those wouldn't be counted as carpool.
Those do not, oh, interesting, so ride-sharing isn't factored in, huh? Okay, thank you. Moving more towards the housing though, so median home value rising from 249K to 351K during that period of time we just discussed, so it's up $100,000, maybe a little bit more. And you guys were hoping for a steady increase. What would constitute a steady increase? Is that by a percentage year-over-year that housing would increase? It's in red, so it went up more than you were hoping for, or more than the plan was hoping for, excuse me. What would steady constitute?
That's a very good question, and I, I haven't given much thought.
Well, one, one overall measure of, of economic activity is the consumer price index, so you could tie it to that. Obviously, the, the housing run-up has been well, well beyond that in the metro region the last five years.
Very good, thank you. So sticking with the housing, and then going into the comprehensive plan, and I'll get to the page here. And I'm probably going to go through each one, actually, I'll start at residential strategy 1, 2. So assist and facilitate home expansion and improvements that are compatible with the local neighborhood area. Can you define that a little bit more for me?
Which one was that?
1.2 of the residential strategy. Assist and facilitate home expansion and improvements that are compatible with the neighborhood. The improvements make sense. What does expansion mean?
Inglewood has a very small housing stock on average. One of these indicators shows you that it's, the average Inglewood home is about 1,100 square feet. This has traditionally not been attractive to families with children, especially older children, and they typically often move away from Inglewood once their children get into school. We saw a large drop in the number of school-aged children living in Inglewood between 2000 and 2010 census, because approximately, we lost 850 student-age children in those 10 years. So it's always been, it's been a longstanding goal in our housing comprehensive plan to facilitate and help people to enlarge their houses.
So this would be adding on square footage, another ring, or just give me another wing going upwards, something of that nature?
Could be that, or it could be to the backyard.
Would this include ADUs? Would those be contemplated in this?
I, I don't think that strategy was, I think there was a separate strategy for ADUs.
Okay. 1.7, increase code enforcement, in same residential strategy 1.7, increase code enforcement abatement to increase housing maintenance levels, and advance substandard housing unit replacement. And it's the advanced substandard housing unit replacement that kind of jumped out at me. Does that mean that we would be looking for properties that would be considered substandard, to use this term, to be scraped entirely and rebuilt? Because I'm seeing replace, which tells me that it's, it's entirely, that's at least how I'm reading that, is that it's entirely wiped out.
There are, sometimes there are, in certain areas, there can be homes that are in very, very poor condition that aren't really conducive to rehab, and so they probably are good candidates to be replaced.
And I'm going to jump on the Kmart bandwagon as well here. When were they fully out of that building? Do you recall when they discontinued business?
It was November of last year, November 17.
Gotcha.
November 15th, 2017.
Gotcha. I do, and I, I know it sounds like, it, there's the company out of California, they have operational control. Weeks become months, can sometimes become years, and it is, I get asked about it a lot, it's a major, major thoroughfare. I think it's a golden opportunity, which I'm sure everybody at the table here realizes. So I know that there's so much that you can do, and a lot is in the hands of the operator, but I'm hoping we can get something going on that as well, sooner than later.
We appreciate that.
Thank you. And I guess so, next step, and I think Councilmember Barrantyne was alluding to it, this is going to come before council for another vote? Or you're just looking for some kind of guidance now of what we like and don't like?
So as I said earlier, the roster of projects is what the planning commission discussed and prioritized and sent forward. What we're looking for is your relative priority.
So should we be giving you numbers of what we like in terms of commercial strategies? How would you like this information presented of the, the projects that we favor?
Well, as I said before, if, if there's some council consensus around one, or two, or three, or how many of these projects that you're interested in pursuing, we would come back with you, to you, with a specific work program for each of them.
It sounds like that you are in favor of moving forward with the Kmart site, the infrastructure study.
Sure, you bet.
Is there any more, any other addition ones that you-
And, and sometimes there's even portions of one, that there might be one of the component strategies that I seem to favor another. Now certainly, I, I would speak for myself here, and I don't want to speak on behalf of the whole group, and I, we might need some more time to weigh this, is, I guess I'm not prepared to give you a final decision at this moment. Okay. Okay. And thank you.
Thank you. And I'm, if it's okay, I'll just go ahead, and then Lynda, you can go next. On the, the Kmart property is for sale. What is it currently zoned?
It's B2, MU-B2.
So what can be built there? Retail only, or?
You can have residential, you can have commercial, office use. It's pretty inclusive.
Okay, so are we thinking that we would do away with retail altogether there?
No, we've had, we've had discussions with the, the leaseholder about the fact that that's a pretty key retail site in the community, but we've also had the conversations that could be something additional to retail. One of the things that is very problematic right now is attracting those larger anchors. They're just not building as many stores as they used to. And so I think if we have a 14-acre site in the, in the very key location of the community, if we can have a, have a mix of outcome there, emphasizing as much retail as the market will support, that's definitely in everybody's interest.
So do we have to do anything? I mean, is the leaseholder asking us to do anything?
The leaseholder hasn't asked us to do anything specific. We actually reached out to them within two days after the store had closed, and talked about the fact that if they are interested in various development options, redevelopment options, we're ready to talk to them about that. And the infrastructure needs may be a component of that. So if we have the ability to, even if we do something internal with our own staff, public works, and, and share some information, if we can go back to them and say, this is the order of magnitude of some things that we could see that would be necessarily, necessary on the site if you're pursuing this type of development, talking about large, you know, bubbles types of things, not really honing in on a specific site plan, that gives them some opportunity to go back and talk about how intensively they want to try to redevelop the site. I think it's in, it's in the city's interest for them to really start over, rather than trying to re-tenant the existing box, because it's old, it would take not very, the types of tenants that would be attracted there would probably not pay a lot of sales tax, would not be very, you know, attractive to the overall community and the region. And so what can they do to take maybe a fresh look at the entirety of the site? And that's where it would come in, if we had some information, at least at a cursory level, of what they would be looking at in terms of that investment outcome for the, for the public improvements that would be needed to support a more intensive redevelopment of the property.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Olson.
Thank you. I, I do have things that I really like on here, and I think my top number one is the Kmart lot area. I think that we would be negligent not to be very forthright and really think about what do we want there. It's not our property, so we have to then convince people that it's the right thing to do, and we've got to make this balance work. And I know that's going to take time, but that, I think not jumping on that when the market is good would be really, I, I think we could be helped several years from now to be negligent and not be thinking forwardly. So I would love to see that as a top one. It's not in my district, but I think it's really key for the way that we view Inglewood. It's part of our retail sub-base that's going to, we're going to lose. So that's a key one for me. I think the other one that I wanted to ask, so I was thinking about these in a couple of different ways. One is what's, what's a hot one that needs to probably happen pretty quickly? To me, that was one of them. November is just, it's a short while ago, I bought lots of holiday gifts there as they closed. But now we're into February, and so, but we've got time to, to really think that one through. But where are some low-hanging fruit ones that you think if we, if you just had a go-ahead, you'd sort of like, yeah, let's, let's get that done now? It seems like some art signage, wayfinding might be that? Then I'd say, let, let's do that. And then, and then the whole, the business improvement development authority area seems like a long-term kind of strategy-building thing, but how could we get going on it now? Find those partners in it? I think the ULI study was very stimulating with conversation and ideas, some way out there, some really, you know, solid, some like, we've thought of that already, or whatever. I really thought that was a very helpful study. No, didn't agree with everything, but I thought it was, so I'd like to jump on some of that to move a little bit forward, and if that would take a lot of time to just keep that at bay, if we were going to do the Kmart thing as a major one. And then I, I also think this medical district transition area is probably contiguous with that plan in some ways about, you know, how do we think about these larger public districts, and whether or not the key players are in that area, that then it would trip this to go somewhere as well. So I don't know how much those two are connected together. But the last concern I have is for housing. I think the middle, we heard from the ULI study, the middle housing unit is the one that's most at stake with the, the most to lose for Inglewood overall, with families moving out all the time. Inglewood is known from many people as a starter home place, or a place that you go and age, and I think I always want this to be a community for all ages, and I am going to age here. I am aging. I will continue to, but I do want to see families stay, and not just keep rotating over. So what can we do to loosen up a bit for a, a family with preschoolers who then decides, I'm going to go somewhere else for elementary school, because my house is getting too small? Or actually, they mostly turn into teenagers, and then it's too small. So I don't know what we can do there, if that's simply tweaking some things in some areas where we know they're going to be hot markets that keep it stabilized, so that families actually can afford it. So that's a lot of things, but I am ready to, I'd like to see us make some moves here.
I would like to add something about the housing market.
I would like to add something about the housing market situation. The, the group of people that interviewed me, this one gentleman, he has two daughters, I believe they're teenage daughters, and he lives in an eight, him and his wife and his two teenagers live in an eight hundred square foot house. I believe, as we see the housing prices increase, that people are going to have to make those choices to live in smaller homes. I'm not sure that we necessarily need to address those issues.
I disagree.
So, and I think some of what we're seeing, and we don't necessarily realize it, is from 2000 to 2010, houses weren't selling, and all of a sudden, they are, and there's change in ownership. So, I probably would like some data on that about the change in ownership. But, some of this is the normal progression. Because we have an aging community, the, actually even older than the baby boomers are going to nursing homes, or, you know, leaving their homes, and then younger people come in because they're the ones that can afford it. So, if there, is there's any way to get that type of information about not only that the houses are selling, but who is buying them?
Who's leaving them? Yeah.
Who's coming and going?
Who's leaving, who's coming?
One of the things I failed to mention is it relates particularly to someplace like in some of the analysis, such as the Kmart options. I failed to mention that our redevelopment manager, Dan Perumba, who is starting a week from tomorrow with our department, and he brings a wealth of both public and private sector real estate expertise. And so, a lot of that analysis, as I said, we can bring in-house and have those, those resources for us going forward on some of these key sites. So, I just want to make sure that that, that's known as it relates to that specific project. And I've already discussed the fact that that would be a very early priority for his, his work plan with us.
Thank you. Councilmember Berantine?
When I went to the Urban Land Institute meeting a couple of months ago, and the president, I believe he's President Shay Holmes, announced to everybody that the millennials are moving, I mean, all of the studies, articles I've read, the millennials are moving out. We have a larger proportion of millennials in the suburbs now. They want single-family homes, they want good neighborhoods, they've learned how to have children, and they want, like, I believe his exact words, like every generation before them, they want what the generation before them had, and that's a home, a yard, a dog, good schools, good neighborhood. And they're transitioning out because while we are aging, they're aging too, they got older too. So, and I really appreciated the, the take that they had on that, because they were also encouraging, especially the suburbs, especially first ring tier suburbs, to go ahead and maintain some of that housing stock, that that's the suburbs that they're kind of looking for, and that's why we're, what Denver's now six hundred dollars a square foot, we're one hundred dollars, I mean, it's going to come here to go ahead and build, and so there's a certain amount of synergy that happens. But, I would like to see the, the housing information, just so that we kind of know that we may already have a valuable asset here, and we want to keep it. We want to make sure that we have that available as an option as well for people. The, I am, in the grand scheme of owning a site like Kmart, November isn't that long ago. What I'm concerned about is that we fall into the same trap that Littleton did with, with Chang's property over there at Columbine Square, that they went ahead and made it available to them, you know, their multi-billion dollar, I think he's one point five billion dollar operation out of California. And they made it known that they were going to make some taxpayer money available through urban renewal district. And now, that is the only urban renewal district that's allowed. He self-blighted, kicked out all his tenants, and he can sit on that property until hell freezes over, but the community doesn't much like it, including the other side of the street, which is Inglewood, until he gets what he wants. And he wants taxpayer money to go ahead and redevelop that property, and he has the money to sit there and wait. What I want to make sure that we avoid is dangling a carrot in front of anybody, that they think that we are either in a rush, or that we are so hot to get something done, that we are willing to open up the taxpayers' wallet to go ahead and start making them offers, until we really even know what they want. That area would be very difficult to blight, considering Williams Jewelers has a big Rolex sign on the other side of the street. So, I realize that maybe a blight study isn't what you're looking for, but even to suggest that we would be looking at doing an urban renewal district there, which only would siphon off anything, taxpayer dollars off of that site would be ridiculous after all of the unfortunate sites that we've already had, siphoning off taxpayer dollars and not providing us money. So, I would like to see that stay as a vibrant money producer. So, I do want to just be careful about throwing around, and I'd like to take this, out of here, this idea of investigating this, an option, of this being an urban renewal district, because all of, all that would do would be, I don't want that to be the first thing out of the gun, is to go, hey, we're willing to go ahead and make this into, you know, a funneling of taxpayer dollars into a developer, when I don't think that area needs that. And I certainly don't want to see that out of the chute, because I don't want to encourage somebody to sit on that property, waiting for us to go ahead and give them stuff, because we don't give it to them, it's the taxpayers who are giving it to them. So, and I think that area is developing pretty well on its own. How much, because you said you're looking at doing a study for that area, how much money are we talking about to go ahead and do? You're not doing a blight study, you're not doing a condition study. What are, what would you be doing over there, and how much would that cost?
So, as I said earlier, I'd see it one of two ways. To get a preliminary analysis of what we would be looking at under various redevelopment scenarios, the combination of our redevelopment manager and his expertise, and our, our public work staff and other city staff that know our infrastructure well, know what the replacement costs would be, we would do that largely in-house. If we had the opportunity to work with that underlying property owner, or the leaseholder, and there was a larger discussion around some, some refinement of those numbers, then I think we would try to partner with them to pick up a chunk of that cost, or either a cost sharing arrangement, if we want to get more specific.
And the only thing I would like to see is the changing of the partnering, because you say, then we would like to partner with them. I would like them coming to us, and with the ideas of what they want to see happen, before we start getting embedded in what we want there, without even knowing the energy, the synergy, the creativity that's coming from the people who have skin in the game and will make the money, and put the investment in, and them coming to us, not the other way around. And that's where I think that I have a lot of concern with what you're proposing with the, with the Kmart stuff right now. I don't, we are not desperate, and we need to make sure that we're finding out what's going on first, before we're encouraging people to, like I said, I in no way would support an urban renewal district in that area at this, at this point, and I don't think anything could come forward with that. So, if we could get a little bit more of a handle on that, and certainly before a lot of money is spent deciding what we want on it, that we have done our due diligence with the private sector and allowed them some time to come to us and give us some of their ideas first. And if there's going to be any money spent, if we could know how much it is before we go ahead and put that kind of investment in, because I think the private sector ought to be doing that kind of investment and not the taxpayers.
Thank you. Councilmember Wink?
Thank you very much. Council has a break from eight to eight fifteen. I'll speak in seconds here. So, you've requested that we all contribute our, our points of view in terms of prioritization and in terms of these, these proposed items for moving forward, and I believe you said your next steps would be to develop work plans based on that order of interest from I just want to propose perhaps something in writing that, that is, is a whole document that, that your team can review would be most beneficial, and if agreed, maybe each of us with our different opinions can share, maybe, I would even volunteer to put together some document, but maybe we could share with our city manager, our prioritization order, and Member Questa was asking, just how, how do you want us to share this with you? Maybe we can put something together, share it with the manager, and maybe he and his team, I don't mean to volunteer you for more work, but I'm just thinking of the easiest way for us to share all of our ideas, get it to you in a usable format. And then, you have then a prioritized list based on majority, it's the majority of us. We all have opinions, but perhaps your team manager could assess, well, four members agree on this, that, or, and show us the details, show us the end numbers, but based on that, put together some sort of order, I'm hoping, I'm being clear, I'm trying to hurry, so that you can then have something concrete, with the understanding that you're putting together work plans that I imagine we would discuss, that you're not just moving forward and starting construction on everything.
Correct.
So, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson? You want to entertain more, are we going to take a break? You want to just finish this up and then take a break? Let's finish this up and then take a break.
So, I just wanted to make clear that my, my view on the housing thing is to find middle to lower income kind of possibilities for people to stay here and be here, for millennials that have moved here, to continue to live here, raise families here. And if they can raise them in an eight hundred square foot house, bless them, because they're going against the norms, and I think all the trends are showing they're going to move out for bigger homes, and seen it in my neighborhood over and over. But, if they make those choices, that the homes that they are in are in good repair, and that they can stay there. So, what can we do for that? And it might be helpful to know what some models are for some other cities, and what they are finding helpful at this point, because we know it's, I mean, we're getting, people are priced out. That's why some of the elder population is leaving, is because they can make some money and then move into something that's a little smaller, but maybe affordable. But, and then, the other thing is, city managers said something about the amount of money that we're going to lose out of Kmart, which I think we actually should consider in this. If we're losing how much?
Two hundred and? Two hundred twenty-five thousand.
Twenty-five thousand dollars of what is sales tax money that we are not going to replace, that's a chunk of money to not sort of think this through very clearly. I do not want to jump on some bandwagon. Urban renewal would be the last thing I'd want to do with that property. I think it's much higher level, and so I'd want us to be thinking very forthrightly, what, what could go there, what would be a great replacement, but also renew that area, that south broad recorder we've talked about for years and years. This is a delightful time to be talking about it in a way that actually could move forward, because the economy's better. So, yeah, I'm not wanting to dangle things in front of anybody with that, but I do want us to be in the game with people, helping and think through, the last thing I would want to have happen there is for another car place to show up and say, oh, well, let's do a car lot here. I doubt that would happen, those tend to be moving help, but heaven help us, there could be a number of things that would not be very useful. And if we can be talking and thinking strategically about it, that's what I think the progressive community departments do around us that, that make well with it. So, that's what I'd like to see.
And I just have one more comment, along the lines that Councilmember Olson shared about the housing and, and what millennials might want. And I think that some of these smaller homes, they might be willing to move in them and even upgrade them. And one thing I remember from the ULI, there were two things I took away from it, one of them was, what we want as a city, we need to make it easy to do. So, in other words, if we want them to upgrade their houses, let's make building permitting much easier than it is. So, I agree with what Councilmember Olson shared. So, I think you have consensus to go ahead with the housing data. And then, I do agree with what Councilmember Wink shared as well, moving forward with that. So, I appreciate your coming forward with this. I, I mean, I do have some problems with the comp plan itself, and, and with the check-in. I thought maybe the check-in would be to change direction on some things, but it's just how to move things forward. So, that's another area that I would like to, to look at and reevaluate, maybe some of the priorities we have in the comp plan aren't really priorities, but I don't know how that would happen. So, anyway, thank you for coming, and hopefully, that gives you enough to start with. And when does the new person start?
Our redevelopment manager starts a week from tomorrow.
Okay, and it may take a while for them to get acclimated, before they would start working on that project also, correct?
Yes, but as it relates to our internal work, we've budgeted time for that person to start to have the contacts with the, with the leaseholder, start to talk about where they are in their process, do they have any prospects for the redevelopment of that site? That is on their work plan, and I would highly recommend that that not be stopped.
Okay.
And because that person brings, as I said, a wealth of experience, that they can kind of relate peer to peer on the, on the discussions of what could happen in the future. We haven't heard a concrete plan going forward from them yet. So, I think we're still early in the, in the stage.
Right, and I'm also on board of not use, you know, not using.
Public monies.
Yeah, public monies to fund it, so, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I appreciate it. We will take a break.
Correct.
So, probably seven or eight minutes.
If you have an opportunity.
Right. We weren't going to do that. Yeah, we don't want that.
Checking the subtitle.
Huh?
Checking the subtitle. Thank you.
I, maybe some city manager can listen in too. I almost, I think even today, asking him, I think he is the concept in there on what's kind of going on, is well worth, I think Randall O'Toole, when he came in, and I listened to his stuff, he's a former Yale professor, and I know more about the PUD stuff.
Sure.
When you, when, when government controls a piece of property, because we have no investment in it, and we have no, nothing to lose.
Sure.
Because somebody else is, it's not our money. So, it becomes, then, people can kind of tend to shy away from it, because somebody that has control over their property, that doesn't, and we tend to want bushes and trees and parks and things that don't make them money. Or, they come and they go. If, if you don't give me taxpayer money, then I'm going to put up ugly crap and do stuff, and they threaten you to do something like what PF Chang is doing, PF Chang, what the Chang family is doing, it's not PF Chang, it's, that's a restaurant in my suit of fight. So, you have to, I mean, because they're in a pissing mansion now over there, and he will, he will outlast them, he can outlast them.
I would imagine.
Until he can go ahead and do that. But, once you start, once you start sniffing around a property, it gets harder for them to sell it, because it gets hard, it gets difficult, because once government is looking around, sniffing around a property, people go, wait, I don't want to deal with them.
Oh, sure.
So, you limit certain things, and then you also encourage other people to go, well, I'd like it, I'm going to, I mean, we have all of the last four projects that have been done, large projects here, are taxed exempt, they make us no money. We cannot afford to put any more parcels of property in this community up for not making, not contributing to the kitty. Because then the taxpayers continually put more and more in to subsidize for Medici, to subsidize for the Foundry, to subsidize for Traditions, to subsidize for the Delaware Street projects, to, I mean, are you kidding? I mean, we cannot keep doing that. We can't keep doing that.
Sure, agreed. I'm going to grab some water.
But, if you have changed.
Thank you.
I would like to have him come and speak at one time.
And it's certainly a Johnny Mitchell quote. It's got to be pretty liberal, then, right? Which is fine.
I love Johnny.
It's all right. Thank you. It's all right. Thank you.
He's even emailed me and apologized. I was like, who's Bradshaw? I wasn't going to say a word. I was like.
I just was like looking at Larry going, Larry.
But I couldn't resist that. I had to reach over.
That was, that was so, that was so good. That was so good. Well done. I don't know why I didn't take that before. I don't know if the other commander. Yeah, type an email. He could, he could. One like these little corner units. Just roll it out. Yeah, smart move. I'm not sure.
No, we're, we're having our mind.
Oh. I always said that it'd be.
I think I need that size.
Oh, thanks. Yeah, I do. And carry that, all that stuff.
That was the fastest computer run I've ever seen.
So are you going to be here till midnight again?
I don't know what's going to happen.
You making it?
Damn, that was the fastest computer goes run I've ever seen in my life.
You like that? Well, I already pre-ordered it.
Oh, okay. I was like.
Yeah. I got, I got an app on my phone. I was like reorder last meal.
I was like, dude, how did you do that? You were going like three meals. That was awesome. That was awesome.
Hey, what a job.
But just go sit down and.
Thank you.
Losing it. I'm not coughing too much though.
I hadn't noticed.
Oh, that looks good though. Okay. All right. Then we'll start. Okay. Agenda item three is planned unit development discussion. Council will review title sixteen to eight, planned unit development rezoning process and requirements. So we have Mr. Stitt and Mr. Bell to talk to us this evening. Thank you.
We're not really prepared to make much of a presentation. This was an item that was put on the study session agenda, I think for council's benefit to review. So we'd certainly be willing to answer any questions you might have about the PUD process as expressed in the title sixteen.
Okay. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Stitt? I actually have one that I did listen to the last planning and zoning meeting over the weekend. And one thing that came up at that meeting was there were amendments to the PUD ordinance as we have it regarding ownership, I believe. Have there been other amendments to the PUD process since we first initiated it?
So, so the, the PUD process has been around since nineteen ninety-six, okay? We used to have, we used to have something called planned developments, which were a little bit different. That occurred from nineteen seventy-three to nineteen ninety-six. And then from ninety-six moving forward, there was, there were planned unit developments. In two thousand and fifteen, the planned unit development regulations were amended. They weren't, the, the way PUDs were done was not really changed. The requirements became more robust in terms of submittal requirements. And there was a lot more detail added to the PUD requirements and submittal requirements. But in terms of how the process went, as well as whether or not somebody did it in a, a two-step process or did those two steps concurrently, that did not change. As you may know, a PUD has a district plan, which kind of outlines bigger picture type zoning items. It can oftentimes be more of a, a written document. It's kind of the zoning code for that district. And that's followed up by a, a, a PUD site development plan, which gets much more specific. Most often they're done concurrently, but there are cases where they've done a district plan first and then come back and done a site development plan. But in, in terms of clearly the meat of the PUD process, it didn't change in two thousand and fifteen.
Okay.
And that's the, the changes we're, that were referred to at that meeting.
Okay. And one thing I noticed in underlining, especially at the beginning, it really was designed to provide opportunities for developers more than property owners. Is that correct or is that incorrect assessment?
Or, or property owners, either.
Okay.
Either.
Okay. Council member Berentine.
No, this is just for information. I just wanted to get some additional information. I want to, I was very surprised at the beginning of the year for the planning and zoning meeting after they had not met since September. They didn't meet that first one in January, that first meeting. And what had happened on that agenda, so they didn't meet, but that agenda was, it looked like it was being put forward by the community development department just, and there were like four or five PUDs. Like it said, where this is what you're doing for this year. And I was very surprised, given the concerns that had been brought up in September and with the Pearl Street and then what ended up happening with council with that Pearl Street PUD, that it just seems like this was kind of moving forward like that with, and, and it does seem that there's a part of the process internally on how we move forward with it that I would like to get a little bit more information on. One of the things was that the city attorney had that kind of matrix of decision-making. I would like to see a little bit more information on the public hearing piece of it and exactly what the public hearing piece of it is for, especially when public comes and opposes it and what, what sway that's supposed to have on that and that the decision could be made on that. And one of the ideas was to go ahead and bring that back to planning and zoning. But I was surprised that there were so many. But I, when I talked to the gentleman who did the Pearl Street one way back, and I think Audra was there, way back in May when he did his community meeting. I was with Audra and I asked him, why didn't you just do a rezoning? And he said, because community development department told me I should do a PUD. They talked me into doing this PUD. They told me it was available to me. And there was this kind of feel that there was an encouragement and kind of guiding people to say, hey, this is available. This is what you ought to be doing. And as an alternative, instead of kind of what I think it's set up for as the exception. So I'd like to see if we could get some idea on the ones that you have, or at least how many are coming up and how we're having this, what's kind of looks to be an exception, being kind of pushed to kind of fit rather than do a rezoning and what the differences are for that. If you could also provide a map of all of the different PUDs that we have around the area right now. Because I think the planning and zoning department or committee in September made it very clear that what they wanted to avoid was the continued rezoning of the whole city parcel by parcel. And if we could also, when did the half acre, was it always a half acre that you could do for a planning PUD? Or when did the half acre come in?
That was a part of the original adoption of the PUD requirements.
In nineteen ninety-six? Okay. Because I think, I think it shocked all of us on council that you could have three lots and do a PUD like that. And also in kind of going back through the process, I would like to re, have some kind of discussion about that I think that that's a little bit small, that three lot kind of thing is a little small. And also it, it, it was intended under, under number seven. It seems like there was an intention to having unified control under this development. And that's not what we saw on that Pearl Street one at all. They weren't even, didn't even have an assigned agreement as an agent to have like that kind of control of that property under one, all the owners under one control of that property. And that's, you know, there's several things listed here that I've kind of seen that we're not really kind of moving forward with. And I, I actually had suggested putting a moratorium on doing any more PUDs because I'm concerned that we might be misleading some property owners and also not kind of really following, having a good understanding of what our own process is and how we want to vet this out. Because I don't want to see any more people waste their time and money coming forward with something that doesn't end up having a, a better chance of moving forward. And I, I do agree with the planning and zoning department or committee, sorry, commission, that we don't want to encourage a bunch of people to buy properties believing that they can just rezone their three lots or their one big half acre of property, that they can become a PUD. That, I don't believe that that was the original intention for this. So I do think that there's a few more issues we need to do. So one, I would like to see what the city manager brought forward, be brought to planning and zoning on, on vetting the issue with the inclusion of some conversation on the public hearing piece of it for the role that the public can play in, in having that denied. It's not just the sections, with only that addition. And see what planning and zoning thinks of that as a tool for them to use as well as to vet and see if they have any suggestions in changing it or whatever, if they'd like to use it. And then if, if we could use that formally in the future, moving forward, whether the council would like to do that. For us to be provided where the PUDs are. And then obviously the current PUDs, each of them are their own little zone districts within themselves and they have their own rules and their own little things going on. But I'd like to just make sure that we all have an, an idea of how many we currently have in the city. And then if we can have a discussion, at least I got the impression that council had, had a concern of, or at least I was very surprised that, at how small an area can be done for a PUD and whether we want to go ahead and take, have some conversation on whether that should be enlarged. And then the last one would be, how much of a role is the community development department should play? Or do we want to have play in encouraging the use of PUDs rather than kind of a zoning look at things? So if we could have that stuff come back, I would greatly appreciate it.
I, I can speak to, to one or two of those. In terms of maps of the existing PUDs, our existing zoning map, which, which is online, it's a light blue color. And in fact, this area that we're in is a planned unit development. So the color is, they're all color coded. They're light blue and they have a little number inside them. And that little number is tied to the name of the PUD and what year it was approved. There are currently thirteen PUDs that have been approved historically since nineteen ninety-six. There's only been one entirely new PUD approved since two thousand and fifteen. So that just gives kind of an overall perspective. Prior to that, and again, a little bit different animal, planned developments that started in nineteen seventy-three and, and went on until nineteen ninety-five, there were twenty of those total. So that just gives a little bit of, you know, perspective on what's out there. It is on the zoning map. They are somewhat few and far between. As.
I, I do want to just correct it. I meant, when you bring any of this information forward, if we could just have it included with it. And, and I would, are the ones that were pre-nineteen ninety-six, they are considered their own zone district as well, right?
No.
The planned development?
No. The planned development is an overlay over the existing base zoning. It doesn't change the underlying zoning. It just adds another set of criteria for a particular development. So for instance, until the adoption of the PUD regulations, Swedish Medical Center campus had a series of PDs and PD amendments to address the expansion and, and development on that campus. It's not, it's, it's a rezoning in the sense that it adds another layer of.
But it is a rezoning. So I mean, it, it, the reason that they had to have that overlay is because the current, the zoning that they were dealing with would not accommodate what they wanted to do. So it's kind of the same.
Not necessarily. The PU, the PD requirement often kicked in because of, a development was of a certain size.
Right.
Not because what the developer, for instance, Swedish Medical Center, was attempting to do was not permitted under the base rezon, the base zoning.
Well, maybe they could be different colors, but there is, there is a mix of rezoning. And if we could just have all of what's been accomplished with those two things, I would like to see it just when we have the conversation so we can see how much of the area of the city is being dealt with. I know that it's on the zoning map. It just would help when we're having the discussion to have it with us. But I appreciate that.
Thank you. Council member Olson.
Thank you. I would, the history of this is really helpful. I appreciate it. I have had a sense that there haven't been that many, but I think it sounds sometimes in our discussions that we've been having them day after day. And there really have not been very many, or at least not those that have been approved. And those, some just go back to the drawing board, like we were in one up on University. That little place by Joshua School was a PUD request and they did a neighborhood meeting and thought, mm, don't think we'll go down that road. And that happens often, right? I would not want to stop that. I want the ability for people to do things and to think creatively and innovatively. I want the ability for people to do things and to think creatively and innovatively. And I trust the board and commissions that we have, the Planning and Zoning Commission in particular, to think it through within the confines of the thing, to see if they're going to kick it up to us or not. So I do not want a moratorium. What I do think would be helpful after reading through all of this again, and I think, I don't have any trouble with what the PUD process is at this point, but if others do, I think we should know. If we disagree with some of these elements in here, then we probably should speak up. The fact that small units can be done, I guess I'd never, I think it depends on where it is. The one that the Pearl Street one was just a different place compared to even the one on University, which I was not for at all. And by the end of it, it was just like, "Oh, my goodness, how could this happen?" But, you know, it didn't go very far. So I would imagine that happens more often than not and we just don't, just doesn't make it up to us. Well, they're our neighborhood meetings that we end up going to, but one since 2015. And which one was it?
Was, it was actually the, and it's a little bit of a good example of a small one. The Logan Street residences at the corner of Logan and Floyd-
Yeah, it was a great addition.
-was at the half acre threshold. That was approved in 2015. And that particular property, if you recall, had the Shriner building on it. That was originally a church in 1920, before zoning existed in the city of Inglewood. And then when zoning came around in 1940, that, it was still a church. It was too small, it was undersized for a parcel for a church. And then in 1967, there was a variance granted to, for the Shriners to purchase it and operate it as their assembly hall. The Shriners, over time, sort of left the area. And so that property sat vacant for a long period. And there was nothing that the city nor council could do at that point. So a developer was interested in doing something with the existing building. They could not have any other commercial uses in there. A church couldn't even go back in there. And so they actually didn't even have the full half acre, purchased some property to the north, assembled it, put it under one ownership, and proposed a PUD that allowed them to not only redevelop the shrine, the old shrine building, which is now two attached units, and then redevelop a couple more houses to the north of there. And so that was sort of an example of a pretty, a PUD on the smaller end of the spectrum, doing something that the zoning code would not allow it to do. And so that's-
That's, thank you. You're a great historian. You seem up here. This is great. That was the property I was thinking you were referring to too, which has been a great addition to that area. It was perfect kind of fit. When you look back at it now, you wonder why we even sort of worried about it too much, but we should be. So I would not want to put a moratorium on anything because those are the kinds of things I hope will still keep coming out. We still get to say no to it if we want to. But I want to say the city is open for innovative ideas that fall in line with our town plan. I want to still say our, my personal focus is to keep housing affordable and doable. And this one had a work-live component to it that made it possible for people to perhaps have their own little, like ceramics thing going on in the back or whatever and still live. So, yeah. I, yeah.
And along the lines of that one, so it stopped at a certain point. What about the rest of houses on that block? What if they decide they want to do that? They're not in that zoning in that PUD, correct? And so would they be able to do it?
Conceivably.
If they get two or three properties?
Or they could do a base district rezoning of a larger area.
Okay.
But this one was hampered by the kind of zoning, by the kind of commitments already had on it. It's not like a res, it wasn't like the houses up the street.
Well, right, except for, it was some of the houses up the street that ended up getting rebuilt.
Yes.
Yes, that they bought. But also, it has created a problem for the people that live on Grant because there is a zoning overlay on the Grant and Sherman Street that says that if those houses are tore down, they have to be rebuilt on the same footprint. But the people on Sherman and Grant are very concerned what has happened there on Logan is going to create a problem for them. In fact, that that zoning overlay will not be protected. And so I think we need to be concerned about those issues as well. I think another thing, the, what would happen if we went to four to five acres? And then one other issue that I think probably would save the building department a lot of grief is, I do believe in the R1A districts, there is overwhelming opposition to high-density housing. I believe that's why there was such a huge turnout at that PUD meeting at 1327 West Tufts. I also-
Like the other one?
Like the one in, over by where the Joshua School is, I was in R1A, there was, there was over 200 people at that meeting.
They were also from Denver on the other side.
Yeah.
But, good, good show.
So I'm thinking that maybe there are some things in this ordinance that need to be addressed. And so my question would be, is who would address this? Is it something that council would need to look at in amending Title 16? Or is it something that we would ask Planning and Zoning to look at with perhaps guidelines of what to do?
That would be the role of the Planning Commission to, based on direction from council, to suggest some range of amendments that may be appropriate. And again, the process would be, staff would work with the Planning Commission. Planning Commission would hold a public hearing on some proposed amendments to the PUD regulations. And then they would make a recommendation to city council. And that recommendation could be anything from maintain the PUD regulations the way they are to adding additional requirements or restricting the ability of the development community to utilize PUDs.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Berentine.
And I think that's, that's part of what I'm asking. We're a small, we're six and a half square miles. And if we've got 25 of these overlays and 15 or 20 PUDs, that's a lot of, I want to know how much area we're taking up with this, how we're controlling it, how we're going to go ahead and enforce the different zoning that each of these PUDs has that's so unique to each one of them and the overlays to address the question that she had on, who protects it. Once the historians die, who goes, "Hey, I remember, this is what they said. This is what is supposed to be happening here and what the agreement was." Because zoning creates, either they, creates wealth on a property or potential wealth or can diminish it. So this is an important issue. And it's not, I think we also need to go back and get some, include in the history the PUDs that have failed. I mean, there were two attempts to try and do additional PUDs over at the Inglewood Estates or Quincy Lane or whatever they called themselves later. I mean, and they failed. And we need to make sure that we've got our finger a little bit more on the pulse of what the community wants instead of keep trying to come back and do the same thing. And they're going, "No, we don't, we don't want this." So maybe we do need to take a look at doing such a small area for a PUD. When you have 100 people show up for an area like that, I have, I have a lot of people reference that Floyd development and say they absolutely do not want to see that in their area. They don't like it. They think it's way too dense. They don't even know how it went through. But they're using that as the, as that it's scaring them that that's the kind of thing that we're going toward. And they don't like it. So I'm glad it's further over there. My area, along with District Four, button up there. To have 100 people show up to a PUD meeting like that, to have the previous two PUDs that were tried to put in that area fail, then maybe we do need to kind of look at our process and what we're doing so that people don't just think we're trying to keep cramming the same thing down their throat. So if we could, I would like to see them at least explore the amount of land that can be used. I think it's way too small. But I already suggested those areas, but while maybe your area, your more urban density area in the north here likes something like that, that's, I understand. But from what I've seen in my section and in District Four, that's not, that's not what they want to see going on. And they feel like it keeps getting a little bit crammed down their throat. And they think that the city is pushing this and suggesting it instead of doing the zoning process and kind of sticking to like a land use commitment so that they have some confidence in where we're going to be 20, 30 years from now. Not whatever the plan de jour is, they want to know that they've got some stability with the ownership and investment they've put in. So I would like to see some of that come forward. And I think we do have a lot more of our, for such a small town, I think between the overlays and all of the different unique zoning things that we have accomplished, I think it covers a whole lot more of this town than it probably should. And it has to be manageable as we go into the future. Instead of, I think what the concern is, making the whole town, everybody's an overlay or everybody's a PUD or, and that's the only way you can get value out of your land or make the frog into a prince property. And I don't want to see people encouraged to buy frog properties believing we're going to make them into princes.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson.
I just wanted to say that the north is not any more urban than the south necessarily. I think we have to look at, especially arteries, very high-density arteries with lots of traffic. That particular one on Downing is, or Logan in that area is, is one of those and it made sense. And I think the former council agreed with it. And there have been others that we've had 200 to 300 people come to and they've been shut down right away. So I do think it's a mix. It has to depend on, if you're an R1A, which you've suggested, you've suggested, right? I think it was you. That, you know, there isn't an interest in it. We had some shut down in the medical district four or five years ago too. So it's not as if these things are not being vetted by citizens. I'm glad that many people came out. That shows that they're up, they're thinking, they're awake and sounds like the developers going back to rethink the whole thing. And that's what we want to happen. We find out what the appetite is, the market for it, and whether people are ready to do it. And I think that's how it should be, but I would not want to put a moratorium on it for innovation. I have to trust that Planning and Zoning is doing the same thing in shutting some things down and that there are four or five coming before them, that's pretty unusual right now. Is that not a lot, all at once? Or have you just been holding them up?
And, yeah, some of them take time, you know, we don't dictate the timeframe.
Right. Because they're initiated by someone.
Some of them go away, some of them come forward.
Yeah.
And, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, yeah. So I would love to see us look at the amounts. That's fine with me if we look at the amount, but I think I would not want to stop innovative thinking coming through. And even if it's citizen-driven themselves saying things, we may not agree with it, but let's let people have the voice and think about their properties that we want, you know, what they want to be doing with them. And we can say no, we've got guidelines for that.
I would like to address the issue of the staff role in terms of PUDs, just so council doesn't have the wrong impression. We do not promote PUDs over base rezonings. We, when we talk with potential applicants or developers, we look at the broad range of opportunities there may be in terms of zoning. And if a PUD is the mechanism by which they can accomplish what they're attempting to do, we go with that. We can't necessarily say, "No, you can't do a PUD." In fact, in the example of the Pearl Street PUDs, the reason that we suggested a PUD is because the applicant was attempting to do something that the base zoning would not permit. And in order to accomplish the type of development that he and the other property owners were interested in, PUD was the only mechanism to do that. So if somebody comes in, we'll listen to their proposal, we'll review it in terms of the zoning, the base zoning that exists in that area. And if they present something that isn't permitted in that base zoning and it complies with the rest of the requirements within the PUD regulations, that's the suggestion that goes forward.
Can I just add on to that, that even with the Joshua School thing? I know that someone in the staff department told those folks who were looking at developing that, that they would have a really hard time getting this through in the neighborhood because several people called me and said, "What do you think about it?" Wanted my buy-in. And I said, "I gotta come to your meeting and find out what you're proposing because it seemed crazy to me." And you were right, or whoever told them, "This one's going to be a hard sell because we've just gone through Kent Place and all the problems with those." So I mean, I know you probably try not to be opinionated, but you have given them a read of, "This one may not be a good, good fit for this area." And I appreciate that.
And the way the PUD process is set up is that you have to do a neighborhood meeting before you can submit an application. So if 200 people show up, either for or against, that's a good sign.
Sends you home.
Developer or the applicant can get a really good sense of where the neighborhood might be with respect to that particular development.
Well, to pony off of that, I mean, and because I brought that issue up, there have been people that have been interested in properties or purchased properties believing from conversations that they had that they would, they would be able to get something through. And so I want to be very cautious of that because once you have people that have made those kind of investments, they've got skin in the game and I don't want to encourage that if there isn't, right?
I'll look for hope where we might find it.
I mean, obviously, the developer at the rec center made the, I mean, that everybody was very surprised by what happened. And I was, I was surprised that the staff or the developer was surprised by the showing. So I guess it goes both ways. So I appreciate you bringing it up.
Okay. Thank you. And I just want to, there's a couple things. The Pearl Street, there was a zoning overlay there. I believe that Mr. Cohen brought up that that was supposed to be original footprint and that the, that did not fit in with that original footprint thing. The other thing that I would like to address, like Councilmember Olson says, the system is working the way it's supposed to. However, I've gotten a number of emails of people complaining that they live in R1A and they feel like they shouldn't have to be constantly looking to protect what they bought years ago. And so I think that we as a council need to listen. I mean, if a lot of people are coming out in opposition to these things, we might be better off to address it and, and not move forward on, whether it means R1A or whether it means bigger areas, instead of a half acre, make it four or five acres. I think maybe we need to think through some of these things and perhaps look at some amendments to the PUD code. So unless there's anything else, we will continue this conversation. I think this might be something that we could talk to Planning and Zoning about when they come next week. So, thank you very much for your time and for the history and everything. Appreciate it. Item Agenda Five, December 2017, Financial Review. Finance and Administrative Services Director Kathleen Rinkel is present to update us on the preliminary December 2017 financial report as of February 1st, 2018. Good evening.
Good evening. So I've got good news. I had good news last month too. So if you remember last month, we said, I said that we'd probably come in somewhere between two and a half and three and a half million that we would be able to add to fund balance. This is general fund. Well, looking at the finances through December, and these are preliminary, can't even talk at this time of night, preliminary because we're still processing some invoices and will through tomorrow. And then we do our last check run. So then it tightens up a lot. But at this point, we're pretty close and it looks like it's going to be 2.8 million.
Great.
So we've over, over, say, gathered our revenues and underspent our- So we've over, say, gathered our revenues, underspent our expenses, and have worked very hard to do both.
That is always great news.
Making money.
We're making money, yes, we are. So the first page, as you can see, I'm going to point to basically the ending fund balances. You can see they're all positive at this point. We don't have anything that's gone negative, so healthy in the different funds. I'm going to go through this kind of quickly, so stop me if you want to see some more detail or have me expound on anything. Page two shows you the chart, and you can see at the very end where December is, the light blue bar that goes up is our revenue, and how much higher that is than the expenses, which is the red bar. In good shape there. On page three, I'd like to point to the bottom area. The individual departments, each and every one of them, have come in under budget, and they've worked very hard to do so. They've reviewed monthly and kept right on top of it. On page four, I'm going to talk a little bit about our fund balance. You'll notice the 2017 estimate we've updated. Last month, when we looked at the report, it was at 22.7 percent, and now that we know about where we're going to end, we're at 26.5 percent. We're only required to have 16.67 percent, so we're in good shape from a reserve standpoint.
Well, in view of that, can I ask a question?
Sure.
According to our policy manual, that we only have to keep the unassigned fund balance at 16.7 percent. It is actually, just the unassigned fund balance alone at the eight million nine is 19.2 percent, and so we're already over without combining it with the latter. Why do we need to keep them joined together, the latter and the unassigned fund balance?
Well, I don't know that we have to, but I do believe it's defined that way at this point, so we can definitely change the definition. I'm not sure exactly what documents we have to do to change that, but certainly look at that.
Okay, because the policy manuals, we established 16.7. Councilmember Olson?
Why do you care with the later fund, whether it's, I'm just asking, what difference would it make to you?
The only difference it makes to me, there was a point in time where we had to have the latter fund in there, because we didn't have 16.7 percent.
Right.
Now we do.
We were at eight to nine percent that we were setting in.
So I, we, no, we didn't have it in there all the time.
Since we've been on council.
Right, we did. But it was there, it was there to make up the.
Sure.
Right.
When it was, it was supposed to be more of a savings account philosophy, and then it got moved in there to kind of bolster up the, yeah.
But until the last couple of years, we've always had the later fund be different, a different amount.
Right.
We had a percent, I don't know when we combined it.
It was in the 14 budget.
Yeah.
We also had the policy that we generated on how much the percentage.
I think it was at that point, and then they went together, but I'm fine with them either way, I just want to know what the thinking is behind it.
Well, my only thinking is that, not that I'm wanting to spend it, but just to keep the unassigned fund balance, so.
Yeah, well, and then you can also plan on the later fund being used for what it was set up for and not be thought of as a reserve all the time, which is what the problem for all of us has been all along, like what the heck are we doing here? And why do we have it if we're not going to use it for something? So I think we need to have that conversation, though, so I'm glad you brought it up.
I mean, we'll always show them separately, and we can always choose to redefine our reserve balance to be the unassigned being at 16.67 and the later on top.
Well, absolutely. And you do, you separate them out, but, so.
So we can see them.
Thank you.
So on the next page, it is pretty much the same numbers that you saw, I think it was on page three. However, what we do is we provide a fund balance analysis at the bottom. So if you're interested in looking at that, the details there for that. On page six, what I'd like to point out is kind of the tail end of that chart, when you're looking at 17, January through December, notice every month was in the positive of revenue being greater than expenses, except for February, which was just a touch under. So we had a very good year, hoping for the same in 18.
Was that one of those where the personnel things went on a different month or a different timing, so that it?
I didn't look into the detail, but I can for you on that one.
It doesn't matter. I have a feeling it might be one of those, often happens.
We do have lower spending sometimes at the beginning of the year, because everybody has spent for the holidays, and then they kind of tighten up a little bit. Could be that, too. The page seven shows very clearly that Area Seven was our biggest boom, and we're hoping to keep it there. That does include the internet sales, which we're going to try and break out for you this, this coming year, working on that. And then page eight gives the information by area and gives you a six-year comparison from one to the other. So with that, that's pretty much the meat and potatoes.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Councilmember Olson?
So Area Four is where we're starting to see the, is that the Kmart impact?
Yes, that is.
Okay.
Yep.
The only one that went down.
Yeah, and that, that will have an impact on what you're going to see from that particular zone, unless Councilmember Barantine is correct, more people buy Rolexes, so.
Go buy one, please. We do charge sales tax on them. That's a good thing.
Right.
Pretty bad, but. Councilmember Questa?
Yeah, in Area Seven, the year-to-date variance, it's up 19.77 percent, and ran through primarily to several tax remitters who filed collectively more one-time taxable sales in 2017. Do you know what those one-time taxable sales are?
A lot of it ends up being software, where they buy that outside of the city and bring it in.
Gotcha.
We also did have an audit that was performed in 2016 that was contested, and ran into 17 that was significant. We had a company who was selling electrical componentry here that had never paid sales tax for multiple years, and that was what, Kathy, 265,000.
265, right.
265,000 is a one-time payment.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Need to find another one of those.
Well, yeah, our auditor, she's doing a good job, and so that's what they should do, so, in those instances.
Yeah, our revenue from audits this year is right around the 400,000 mark.
Yeah.
And that's just a single person?
We had two for a good portion of the year, and then we've had a hard time filling the second position, but the one that we have right now, she's doing a great job.
You say, I don't know what that employee costs, I'm sure it's far less than 400K, so that's probably a good return on investment.
Certainly. You don't know that.
I would, I'm going to gamble on that one. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barantine?
I might be some, I've heard about her, and at some point, we'll talk about some of the ways that some of the businesses have a little bit of concern with some of the, some of the methods, but they, I'm glad the $200,000 payer could just pay up right away, they must be doing well, so.
Oh, yeah.
That's good. But I don't, what I've unheard for some time now is anything about the fiscal cliff, so all of a sudden, we've got 2.8 million?
That we're, about 2.8. Now, we're still preliminary, so could change a little.
Saved, crisis yet averted again, and I want to make sure that if we're, when we start having the conversation about the budget, that all of a sudden, I'm not back on a cliff again right away in August. So that we're having the discussion and whether we're in a right place with our reserves and what we're doing with our money, and where we can kind of cut to just more prioritize rather than what kind of felt like some odd cliff conversation that apparently never, never came to fruition, which I'm very grateful it did not. And I'd like to believe that it's all of council's work, but I think it's more of the community and kind of been on pace with where we've been kind of over a long period of time with the additional two, 800,000 to 2.5 million dollar increase every single year for almost the last 20 years that I've been around. So are we going to, where are we at with that, and how are we going to be addressing that to kind of start prioritizing some of this money that we've got maybe into more of the prioritizing it into what we need?
Well, I'm glad you've asked that question and brought that up. One of the things we need to enunciate is, we don't want people to get too comfortable thinking, hey, everything's great, here's $2.8 million again, you know, for the third year in a row that we've had a surplus. That's fantastic, but the fact of the matter is, we do have a looming, looming need, not a want, for capital projects that we cannot fund. And that is where we start to really see things to really clamp down on our abilities to make sure, number one, that we're taking care of the infrastructure that we already have. This isn't building new, this is just taking care of what we have, and so I think Mayor has mentioned that numerous times, but you're absolutely right. We are fine, but if you start to look at forecasting out again, the concern is, if we do not continue to see the growth in sales tax or internet sales, which, that's what's really saved us, is Amazon has finally agreed to pay sales tax on the internet, as well as a few other vendors who are large, Walmart is one of them as well, that pays not only from their brick and mortar, but their click and mortar as well. Not everybody's doing that, that's very helpful. But I think what we're seeing is, again, we have one pot of money that pays for both operations and capital, there's nothing separate. And we've been deferring major capital projects for a long time. As a matter of fact, I would like to propose, even though we have this 2.8 million, that maybe not all of it goes back into fund balance. You look at the prioritized capital projects list that we have, and remember, we had to eliminate some and said, these are on the bubble. Cushing Park was one big one. The Fiber Dam down here, or the Faber Dam down here at the Inwood Marketplace where the duck pond is, has failed, and what are we going to do about that? That's critical infrastructure that has an impact on the aesthetics of the community, but also the design and functionality. So we should be looking at opportunities where we have an opportunity to not defer those projects anymore, figure out and have a discussion with this council about how do we, how do we expend that, not just set it away. We obviously want to make sure that we have a reserve, but we also need to make sure that we're addressing critical capital projects that, that have a lasting and enduring impact on our community.
And I agree with that, I think that's kind of what I was.
Yeah.
I mean, now that you've said that it's two, two and a half million each year for the last three years, that's, I mean, that's another seven, eight million dollars that we could have just put into the, into it, instead of keep saying that we have a problem and start making that decision at the end and figuring this out so that we solve it. So I appreciate that we're going to be doing that.
Now, we will be, yeah, we're going to be having that, certainly that conversation too, and one of the things.
Soon as the ink dries on her toe, we should have a discussion on that, if we ended up with more money than we thought, considering.
It's, it's about ready to come forward, too.
Okay, awesome, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
So it is, it is going to come forward, because, and I would like to, if we could throw in the later fund with that, because that was the intent of that fund, was to do long, projects that were going to have a long-term impact on infrastructure and lasting.
Well, I know.
It could even be developing areas that would generate more funds.
Sure. And that's what we heard very clearly from the council in the past, is that the later fund, if you're going to expend later dollars, you better have, that's going to have to give us a return on investment to replenish the later fund. And so we haven't had a project come forward that could do that yet.
They spent a lot of the later fund and didn't replenish it. If we replenished it, it would be almost $6 million.
No, you're right, and so, but, but.
No, we didn't.
That's before my time, but.
Sorry, we didn't.
I want to make sure.
No, we got to stop the bleed.
Yeah, so if we have a project that's going to give us a return, then I'd bring that forward, but right now, these are just projects such as, hey, we've got to replace the pool boiler at the Inwood Rec Center. I mean, that's a big dollar-ticket item, or we need to do something like that, and that's not going to give you a return on investment necessarily. More people aren't going to come swimming because you replaced the pool boiler. But it may be something that you invest in, and it does give a return, but I don't want to get in the development business, even though it would be a lot of fun, and back to my days when I did that, that's not what cities should do, but you should look at opportunities to invest, it's going to help to create that return on investment for you.
I agree with Councilmember Olson, it should be part of the discussion at least.
We'll bring it forward.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Kathleen, appreciate it. We are five after nine. Do we want to go on with the council policies and procedures? I do think we have some things that we need to discuss during council member's choice. I think there are several things that might take a little bit of time, so what is your pleasure?
If we move forward, could we set some kind of time limit so that we're not going till?
10 o'clock is always my latest. I'm not, I don't want to stay past 10 o'clock. Councilmember Olson?
I think what my concern is, is can we assume that we all read this? And I don't know how much time was going to be spent presenting it. Some of the things we've had presented tonight, we probably could have cut out quite a bit more and just said, okay, we've all read it.
Right.
Let's figure out, what are we doing?
Okay.
Otherwise, I'm not going to read anymore.
Right, and I, I do have a question, and I don't know if Mr. Wolf would come forward and we could just ask a couple of questions. Good evening, this may be really short, or could be a little long.
I'm ready for whatever.
So one of my questions is, we don't, do you have something that will just take us forward a little bit and won't take too long? I mean, we really haven't gotten the new copy where everything's taken out yet.
That's right, and part of the reason, as alluded to, Attorney Brown, as even attorneys get flu in a season, it seems, we are working on that revised policy manual. There are several decision points, so essentially what I was proposing to do tonight is pick up where I left off a few weeks ago. There's several policies that we've suggested in your manual that we need kind of an up or down, whether or not they should stay in the new draft that we'll eventually get to you, and there are several items that are not addressed that we need some guidance on as well. So we figured, since there are many decision points still out there for this council to give us direction on, that we try to get through as many of those so that Attorney Brown could reflect those in the draft that she's working on, the revised draft.
Okay, so what is council's pleasure?
I'm fine with chipping away a bit and getting, I mean, it seems like you need to keep having us give you inputs, you can keep working on it, it sounds like, but not go through the whole nine yards if we don't have to tonight.
Of course.
And no controversial things tonight, it is too late.
It's your policy, man.
Controversial. What did you say?
I said, it's hard to dictate what's going to be controversial.
Oh, yeah, that's true.
I would like to move.
That's why I want a time limit set.
I would like to move forward, chipping away.
Okay.
I feel like this has been on our items for a long time, so let's keep plugging away.
Poor Mr. Wolf has been delayed many, many times.
Okay, all right.
I'm also okay with moving forward.
All right, perfect.
For what's the time limit, if we move forward? Are we just doing another hour?
9:30, and we'll, at 9:30, we'll go to council member's choice.
22 minutes.
Go.
All right, I'll talk to you.
Degradable girls.
So I'm going to pick back up on the new section here, this is slide, should be slide 10 for you. This is the section where we have suggested, proposed new policies that are currently reflected in your manual. So these are, everything else we've talked about is just highlighting things that are currently within your policy manual, we've gone through those. These are items that are in this draft policy, current draft policy, that we've suggested and need some guidance on. So one issue, and it actually comes up tomorrow night, ironically, at your water and sewer board meeting, is what to do in the event that three council members attend a board and commission. Technically, that's a quorum of the city council, so one of the things we need guidance from you on is how to notice that. We could notice that as a special meeting of the council when there's three members that we know in advance is attending, we could note it that there's a possible quorum if we're not sure, that's an item that we need some clarification on. I mean, the issue is, I mean, council members, of course, you can attend a board and commission meetings, that is not what we're saying. It's when items that are potentially policy issues that come back to this body as a whole, and if three members are in the room and participating in the discussion, that's of concern. So we want to know what parameters you want to set for that, how do we notice that to the public when we know that there's going to be more than two members attending a board and commission?
Point of information, can you guide me to where this appears in the draft? Is there language regarding this in the draft?
That was my question as well. Thank you.
That's a good question. So this is one that we're pulling directly from your charter and defining quorum, sends three members of city council constitute a quorum.
So the language does not appear?
This one does not, we need to address it in this, in this manual.
Well, how do we do it now? I mean, the water and sewer has always had three.
We post it as a.
As a meeting?
Yeah, it's one of the issues, as we've been working through this, that Attorney Brown flagged, for tomorrow night, without any type of guidance, we just put a simple note on top of the agenda that said there's a possible quorum. put a simple note on top of the agenda that said, there's a possible quorum of the city council. Um, but, you know, without specific direction on, on how to notice that. Uh, like I said, it could range from noticing it as a special, uh, meeting, or a study session of, of city council, to just an informal note. Uh, water and sewer board might be a particular issue that we need to research a bit more, since three members are listed in the constitution of that, uh, body, uh, but there's been issues in other boards and commissions as well, and more than two council members have been in attendance.
Okay, can I ask another question, then? Also, like that, a special neighborhood meeting, um, a lot of us, more than three of us were there, and, I mean, the truth is, it's possible that especially even four people could be there, the district that pertains to, and the three at large, or even more council members. How do we address that? Because, um, we didn't necessarily all talk to each other, or we didn't necessarily speak.
It's your concern.
Sorry, I needed to get a mic. As we were going back through and, and evaluating the exact language of the Open Meetings Act, we were pulling out the language that said that if three or more members of the city council appear at a meeting, then it should be, it, it is posted as an open meeting, it is an open meeting. Again, the open meetings rules and open records laws are evolving every year. They're being looked at again this year by the state legislature, and it's just our job as staff to keep bringing you up to date as those things get modified and updated. So, the rule used to be that as long as you were not talking to each other, it didn't create a meeting, but I, I believe that the interpretation of the rule now is, if three or more of you are in the room, and the business of the city is being discussed, those are the two elements. If you're all in the room and the business of the city is not being discussed, it's not an open meeting, and, and that does happen occasionally as well. But, when a committee is meeting, clearly they're meeting on the business of the city. And therefore, if we have three members of the council in the room, we do want to start pu, posting that as, as a meeting of the city council. Whether or not it's posted as a workshop, because there's no action taken by the city council, uh, that's, or a study session, I'm sorry, but, uh, how, how you do that is your choice. I would recommend that you allow us to post it as a study session, so that we can also put on that notice that while three members of the council will be in attendance, or four members of the council will be in attendance, this is not a regular meeting, and no action will be taken by the council, so that the community doesn't have to worry that they have to show up and find out what action you're taking.
Councilmember Olson.
I, I'm all for, uh, posting it in whatever way we can, but I would not want it to send a message to future people who have not been in this conversation, or council members in particular, is that it then allows them to have a conversation, to make decisions, or that, or to talk about policy, but not make a decision, but talk about policy. I mean, I think that's at the, at the Pearl Street, or not the Pearl Street, the, that's the other one. Yes, Tufts one. We were all like, okay, trying to keep arms length, and, you know, talk about the weather or whatever, um, but I don't, I, I mean, we need, we should be really clear in our language that no, I don't know how you do it, but I'm absolutely for us posting it, however we think is the right, and send the right message, that we're not discussing things either.
We can do that.
Okay.
So, are you suggesting that the neighborhood meeting isn't necessarily as...
I wouldn't, I mean, I felt like that night, I shouldn't be standing around and talking to you all about the viability of that project at all.
Oh, right, yeah.
So, that's what I don't wanna have signaled that, oh, well, yeah, it's posted, we can do whatever we want. Well, no, we can't. It's not, it's not open to others, nobody can hear us, 'cause it's not taped, it's, nobody's there to...
Well, and it's, it's also very dangerous for us to talk about that, because that could potentially come before council as a quasi-judicial hearing, so...
Yeah, but we all know that, um, but would, would the public know that? Would, would others assume that we're talking about things? So, making it clear, we all know that that's the case, and we stand up and say, no, we're not talking about that, or if we start to talk about it, we stop each other.
Right.
Well, one of the items that is related to this, that we're not gonna solve in fifteen minutes, so maybe just put it in the back of your minds, is the role of council liaisons to boards and commissions in general. And I think this speaks to the problem of three, as I put up there as well, is that if an item is being discussed at the committee level, a board and commission level, and there's three members that are a part of that conversation, if you've clearly defined that liaisons are simply there to, um, essentially just serve as that liaison from this body to the board and commission, without participating in the policy discussion and action of that board or commission, then that's, that's much more reasonable and defined, and you've set that as your policy. Now, if three members are kinda actively participating in that discussion at the board or commission, and that policy comes back before this body for a decision, I mean, that's where you start getting into the gray area that Attorney Brown is, is talking. So, yes, it's an open, in meetings, uh, issue, but also, I think you can solve some of that with your boards and commissions, by defining what the role clearly is of a, of a council liaison.
Amy was...
I had some of those same concerns. So, and I'm all for posting it when we're aware of that that may happen, um, but what do we do when we're not aware of that? Like the Tufts meeting, I know, I didn't know who else was gonna come, I didn't ask, I, we all just showed up. So, what do we do at that point, you know? How do we post that? Or do we just have some formal rules that we all decide not to talk to each other?
Post them.
We posted it.
We're gonna have to post them.
Just all the time.
Well, the interesting thing is, I didn't even see, I, I didn't see Linda at all until it was over, and...
And you came late, you were, I couldn't get into the, into the room even, so...
So, yeah, so I didn't see it, people, till it was all over. I mean, I did see that you were there. But, okay, I, so we're gonna post those as well?
I, I think so.
Okay. But that's still, we still should not discuss business, especially quasi-judicial.
And there, there's other aspects of that, too, with boards and commissions, specifically where there is a meeting set. I mean, obviously, neighborhood meetings are a little bit more difficult, but in, in terms of cha, uh, training our chairpersons, if a third member of council were to, to attend and didn't know that there'd be three, three members, uh, obviously, we can't post the meeting right then and there, but we can have the chairperson kinda announce to say, we've had, have three members of, of council here, whatever the line is, they're not actively participating in this discussion. However you wanna handle that, we do need some clarification in how we're, we're training our, our chairpersons. Again, just to help with clarity for boards and commissions and the public, uh, you know, what you're able to do in your capacity as a council member at those boards and commission meetings, when there's more than two of you in the room.
Thank you. Councilmember Berantyne.
I heard from the planning and zoning meeting that you've got members of boards that, that are getting confused, that they're telling the other, uh, people on the board, if there's more than three of us in a room, one of us gotta leave. That's, that's garbage. I mean, it's a, it's a community meeting, we, we obviously don't, um, you know, check with each other, hey, where are you going, you know, so, and, and we all wanna make sure that we're there participating and, and hearing what's going on. And I'm sure that, Linda, you didn't discuss with anybody the, um, vitality of the Tufts meeting or whatever, because we're supposed to know enough about what conversations we're supposed to have. But I am not gonna not talk to a constituent if they want to express something to me about what's going on in a meeting, just because there were three other people there, doesn't have anything to do with me and the people that I'm, I'm working with. So, um, I do wanna make sure that we're not trying to limit ourselves in, in what we attend, or be afraid, I mean, we've all gone to things where there were chamber events, that there's more than one of us, I mean, I, I understand the difference between the boards and commissions, because the intent is that city business is going to be discussed, but I don't, I don't wanna make any of our boards and commission members believe that they have this onus on them, because they're supposed to be representing the community and out there as well, too. So, I do want them to get the training, but I don't want them to get trained, or with us, to where we're paranoid about going someplace or doing something either. Um, I, I don't know how far we wanna kind of take this. I can't help somebody's impression of what they think I'm saying, um, and so I, I, since I can't control that, I can't worry about that, I can control what it is I do, and I wanna make sure that, um, we're as open and transparent as possible. But even for the community meeting, when that's noticed, when that's a city meeting that's going on, isn't that already considered an open meeting, because it was noticed as a meeting?
The, it's not posted as a meeting of the city council. It's posted as a meeting of whatever it is. Under the subsection of the Open Meetings Act, it says, "All meetings of a quorum or three or more members of any local public body, whichever is fewer, at which any public business is discussed, or at which any formal action may be taken, are declared to be public meetings, open to the public at all times." I'm looking at what some other city, cities are doing, because I'm getting very interested in what their policy manuals are stating, and I wanna see what, what kind of language they're using for that. But at this time, how I'm interpreting that is, it's a public meeting of whatever the board and commission is, but it's also a public meeting of the city council, because we have three or more members of that public body there. So, it's, it's posted as a public meeting of planning and zoning, and a public meeting of the city council.
My concern is, without the distinction of participation or not, um, being defined, I can, I can partici, I can, I participate in a planning and zoning meeting when I listen to it. And, and I don't go to, I've never gone to a planning and zoning meeting, because I think it would be inappropriate to go. But I listen to them, and I comment on them, and I have, it, 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 it shapes what I think, and how I feel, and what's going on with the decisions that I make. And so, it becomes participation kind of via the fact that it's out there in public, and I can listen to it, even though I would never physically go in and be in that, at that meeting, I would actually think that would be wrong. So, I'm not sure where we draw the line, except to disclose what we're doing, what's influencing our decisions, what, the conversations that we're having, if we believe that it's, especially for something like a quasi-judicial. I mean, it's gonna be kinda difficult for us to, to wrap it around that, and, and to have the kind of character and integrity where we go. This is where I think that I'm not crossing the line, because I, I'm still gonna listen to planning and zoning meetings. I have, we, we listened, we did the minutes before, we just didn't have them, we always got the minutes for the meetings, we just didn't have it. But now, there seems more of an intimacy of that kind of participation piece of it. And, and I'm not sure, I'm not quite sure how we deal with that. The water and sewer board, um, because we were meeting and interviewing people for the first meeting, so, I'll be attending, but that is by charter set up, and, and for us to vote and participate by design. So, I'm not quite sure how you get around that one, because it's specifically in the charter that we're going to participate. But I don't know how you call that a meeting of council at the same time, so I would kinda like to see how some of the other cities are handling this, um, and wrapping their heads around it, without getting everybody paranoid about not wanting to attend things, because best representation is the best informed we can be. And, but I also don't, I, I don't wanna violate anything and not have it be transparent.
Yeah. Every concern you've just mentioned are my exact concerns as well. I'm used to interpreting it as, as long as there's no participation, there's no meeting. But unfortunately, the clear language of the state statute is making it even more strict, and...
Then I'll share my concern that, again, with the videotapes of all of the meetings and that, that I actually don't have to physically be there to have participated in the way that you're defining it at this point. And where does the disclosure start and end? Because of, I mean, a majority of this council has already said that they listened to that tape for the planning and zoning meeting, and had an impression, or came, came away with, uh, some issues, made comments on it. Does that become participation? So, I just wanna, I, I wanna kinda make sure that we're...
Let me be very clear. I'm not interpreting it that narrowly.
Okay.
What, what I'm reading is just clear on the face, if three or more of you are in a room at which, uh, the business of the city is being discussed, I'm calling that a meeting of the city council, because it's three or more members of the city council. The fact that you can go back and listen to all of these meetings on your own, I, I don't think that that's even touched in this language, and I think you're absolutely fine doing it. And, and I also appreciate that you've stated something that I'm not sure everybody else is doing, and that is, if it is something that's going to, um, impact your, your thinking within a quasi-judicial, uh, decision-making process, that, that you actually stated on the record, and I watched this meeting, and I watched that meeting, and I think that that is perfect. It absolutely states trans, you know, transparently what it is you're doing in those situations. But in the more general legislative situation, whatever you watch with the information you're taking in, that's totally your business.
Unless I, unless three other people are in a room with me.
Unless, right.
Then it's everybody's benefit.
Councilmember Olson. I, I wanted to shift just a little bit, you brought up something else that I think we maybe have dropped or haven't said anything about, and that is, um, for other boards and commissions that were liaison, and the conversation about what does it mean to be a liaison? I'd like to have that conversation. I just wanna put it out there, you all wanna come do one of the boards I'm on? You're fine, let me know, and I'll take a night off. But one of the things we did maybe seven, eight, maybe ten years ago, was we had sort of a courtesy call, if someone was gonna show up for some reason, that we let someone know, hey, I'm gonna come to your cultural arts, because I'm concerned about this issue, I just wanna listen in, um, which could confuse liaison as well. I know that happened with Inwood Housing Authority a few times, and people were confused about why are you here? It happened early on to me with water and sewer, um, and we had four people then in the room. So, I, I do think we should talk about what the role of liaison is, and whether or not we're going to just say, okay, you can come anytime you want, and everything will always, but if you came to, I don't know, Parks and Rec, you're, it's just you. If I showed up and somebody else came, or, or, the library for me, and two other people came, hey, let me know. It's, it's a night off, if you really wanna go and be the liaison.
But if what, is what she's saying, can we just go, if we're just in the audience and not participating, does it matter?
I believe that if three or more members are... Three or more members of any public body are in the room at which public business is being discussed, that we need to be posting that.
That's what she's been saying all along.
No, I, I...
So, yeah, we can't just show...
I heard that, but we also had three or four, we had, we had five of us that were in, four of us, five, that went to that meeting at, at, for Tufts.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's...
We had one person missing, so we were a quorum, we had a quorum.
And that's what caught my attention, that that was going on, was actually that meeting. And so, yeah, I do think that we need to be posting.
But we could still have done that, me, we could have still attended, it's just you would've needed to do something.
Yes, we would've posted to the public, that's all.
That's fine. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Martinez.
Um, thank you. I was gonna say, along with what Councilmember Olson was saying, I would like to also discuss formally with this group, um, our roles as liaisons, um, especially because I know the, um, staff is gonna be training the board's, uh, chairpeople, uh, at the end of the month, on a new, their new process. And I think we should get our ducks in a row prior to that meeting, if possible. I don't know if we can discuss it at our next study session, but more formally, so we're all on the same page before that formal, um, new process with the boards, uh, takes place. With that, too, are we, I saw the email about it, is, is it, um, is staff desiring all of council to come to that meeting, to...
Three of you are attending, let us know.
Yeah, I was gonna say, are we, are we saying out of that? Are you, we got invited, so...
Yeah, absolutely. We would encourage you to attend, I think it'll be useful information. Obviously, some of what we cover depends on how far we get with you. We won't be jumping out in front of you on any changes to the process. I think, as I stated last week, there's a number of items that we can cover that will be helpful with boards and commissions regardless of how far we get with the, with the policy manual. One, quote, new item we'd like to cover is to suggest to our chairpersons, Bob's Rules of Order, just because it's simpler, easier to understand. We would like to promote a little bit more formal interaction with the chairpersons and our staff, so that our staff isn't the one feeling like they have to produce an agenda, that the chairperson is approving the agenda. So there are some procedural items that we'd like to cover on that. And just a refresher on open meetings and open records, I think will be helpful. So even if we don't clarify some of the roles of the council liaisons or what have you, or get clarity on exactly how we're handling some of these, you know, three-member issues or what have you, we certainly won't be directing staff or chairpersons to kick a council member out of the room if you attend. But we will continue to bring these, these items up. There's a few items that we know we're not going to accomplish in February alone. We'd like some clarification and suggest some changes of how you do appointments. We have issues with vacancies in the midterm, in the gap between the six months, and so we'd like some guidance on stuff like that. So we know not all those items will be covered before then, but hopefully that session will be productive for everybody regardless of how far we get with some of these items.
Okay, so did that give you enough information? And I appreciate you bringing this forward, and I do think it would be helpful for each of us as liaisons. I never got any formal training as a liaison when I first came on board, and I, so I think it would be helpful for us to attend that as well. And just in the full disclosure, I actually went to the planning and zoning meeting, and I know that we don't go at the beginning on Tuesday night, just to invite them to the joint council meeting with us next week. And then I excused myself, and I said, I don't want to interrupt your meeting, I just came to invite you, and I excused myself, because I don't want to get involved in being present at a quasi judicial board. I mean, that was something that I learned early on, that we shouldn't be attending the quasi judicial boards, so.
Did they accept your invitation?
They did. I actually, I actually encouraged all of them, you know, to put it on their schedule if they could, if they could come. So, so we'll see. But anyway, it's probably...
The hour has told, yes. Thank you for, thank you for taking some time tonight.
Well, thank you.
Of course.
And thank you for waiting for us. Okay, so this is where we start next time. Okay. There, I actually just want to bring up a couple of things before I go into council members' choice. Actually, Mr. Kekan, I believe, Kekan sent an email to you about an application for one of the pension boards, and because we're so short, they were looking perhaps for us to do an interim appointment, which means if we would decide to do that, that we would probably need to do an interview, and perhaps we could schedule that interview right before the study session begins. I don't want to necessarily get in the habit of that, but I think certain boards, what is your, what is your thoughts on, especially the police, is it the police or the fire?
The fire.
Oh, the fire?
Fire is worse, but police is suffering as well from...
Okay. Okay, Councilmember Olson.
I'm fine with us doing that. I could, I can't make it early if it's next week, but I am fine with you moving ahead because we need to get to all those boards. I will make it here just in time for 6 o'clock.
Okay.
Councilmember Wink?
I'm fine with us doing that as well.
Okay. Okay, so the sooner the better? Are you thinking next week, or should we wait till the 26th?
You probably, you might, you could do it next week, understanding though that I think they're trying to reschedule the fire and police pension meetings for next Thursday, actually this week. So we've already missed this month, so you could wait longer. If you wanted to wait till the 26th, you could, yeah, 26th, you could do that.
And if we do it on the, we can talk about this at the meeting, at the mayor meeting, but maybe we could do it right at 6 o'clock, because it probably, I mean, before we were giving, what, 10 minutes?
Yeah, they're 10 minutes.
So...
It'd be on TV.
I'd rather do it sooner. I mean, unless, Lynn, if you can attend the next week, or we could just have it right at 6.
It's just that, next week, because we moved to a Tuesday night?
Right. Oh, so it's, if it was a Monday night...
Oh, yeah, then it's fine. That's why I said, then after that, again, I'm fine. It's just that, next week, it's a Tuesday night, I teach until, right up till then.
And the only reason that it doesn't matter, I do, the police officer's pension board meets tomorrow.
Oh, yeah.
And, and so that won't be for a month. So we could go ahead and wait till the...
26th.
26th, and then we could do it even a quarter till 6, or...
Yeah, well, that's, I thought you were suggesting is coming earlier than 6, and if you were, then I'd just say, next week, I can't. But if you can go ahead without me, I don't mind.
Okay.
Will we have enough time to vote?
But if you want to wait until the next...
You wouldn't be able to vote until that first business meeting in March.
I'd do it next week.
And we would still be able, they'd still be able to attend the meeting in March, though?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have people who are applying then?
One person, out of the, out of the blue, said, hey, I'm happy to do pension. I think he read someplace that we were short of people on the pension boards, and said, I know pensions, I'm happy to help.
Bless them.
Yeah, that's what I said. That's why I brought it forward.
All right, and then, let's see, that, and I just, I do want to bring this up, because I appreciate Councilmember Kesta's request about where the funding is going to come from. We do not know how much this special election is going to cost. But there are places, and I'm assuming council has already voted for the $17,000, that there is $17,000 available, but we may need more money than that. And so, I mean, you suggested perhaps it could come from the unassigned fund balance if we need to do that?
If you needed to, yes, Mayor, that's correct. And I did identify just another $16,000 out of the council budget. So for example, you have $10,000 in professional services, which I'm not sure what you'd utilize that for this coming year.
Cannot leave, you have to stay forever.
That's typically...
Could be for anger management.
Potentially.
Oh, we don't need that anymore, I'm sorry.
That's right. And as well has been suggested by many of you, is to curtail or cut back on the food budget, and you have the salary savings for not, you're getting off cheap with the mayor pro tem.
She's getting paid as the mayor, right?
No, as the mayor pro tem. I'm getting paid as the mayor pro tem.
Mayor pro tem, not as the mayor.
It's just that we have a seventh member savings for...
Right.
We have a seventh member. That exception of 50 bucks a month is going to get a ballot or two.
It might.
So I, does that answer your question, Councilmember Kesta?
Well, and so that puts us at, if we're using the 17 plus 16 and some change, did I hear?
You're at 33.
Because we're at 33, that's good. I think that's a good start. I would think we'd want to drain everything from council we could before we'd have to look, look towards the unused funds. And weren't we just discussing potentially dedicating some unused funds towards capital projects?
Yes.
Infrastructure.
Well, not the unassigned fund balance, because that is actually...
Yes.
We have to keep...
This would be funding that, as Director Winkle mentioned, money that comes back, it's one-time monies, but I would prefer you use that to build something rather than vote for something.
Couldn't agree more.
Right, absolutely.
Oh, I'm going to pretend you didn't say that.
So that gives us up to 32. I mean, to me, we could revisit the subject if we get beyond 32.
Right.
Which hopefully we don't, I mean, who knows?
I'm thinking that, once we put it, and it is possible, actually, I have heard that they are, that staff is coordinating with Lou Ellis, because she's done special elections before, and so she's helping us. But I think we can do competitive bids, because there are people out there that they do that for a living. And so, once we have some idea, we can put that out there. And I'm sure the city clerk is working on that.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Follow-up question. I'll do some Googling on that myself. So the city doesn't necessarily have to operate the election? We can...
We can hire some things out.
We can have a third party run our election.
Kind of technically, we still have to do the election.
Yes, we're still doing it. The city clerk is still responsible for the management of that election. However, she and her staff will be still keeping everything else moving forward, liquor, marijuana meetings, everything else, but will still have a hand on the tiller, if you will, to make sure that it's being done appropriately.
Thank you.
Councilmember Martinez?
I was just going to say also that I think we should use anything out of council budget before we dip into anything else to pay for this. This was kind of our decision to go this way, so I think it's only fair that it comes out of our budget first, before dipping into anything else. There are, we could do the food budget, there's $4,500 there, that's a good amount. There's also a ton of printing costs, I don't know what those are for, if they're for our paper packets that we get, or materials that we use for that, but there's, I think, a lot of other opportunities, and we should explore all of our council budget opportunities before taking anything else from anywhere else.
Okay, and I am, I'm okay with that. I just want to say this, though, there are people that work, and I know that you're one of them, that it is very difficult for them to get dinner. I'm okay giving up, because I can fix dinner before I come. That's not an issue. So, but there is money out there, we will be able to deal with that when we are, when we have more information exactly what it's going to cost. Councilmember Berentine?
I want to be, I don't want to cut off my nose to spite my face, and I'm not stepping over a dollar to pick up a penny. I would not take away any employees, including this council, ability, anything that gives them the ability to do their job. I wouldn't take away your laptop, or your special keyboard if you need one, or a mouse, or whatever's going on, or a standing desk, or whatever it is, or a screen thing, or a ball for somebody who's pregnant. I mean, there are things that you do so that you can properly do your job, and I'm not going to cut the knees out from this council or any member of it now or in the future to go ahead and be able to do their job, especially when you're talking pennies. And to go ahead and do anything with the printing piece, per se, would be like taking away my, my computer. It is how I do my job. So I want to make sure that we are cognizant, we're not trying to nitpick at each other on how we're doing our job when we think things are important. There are certain things that, say, I've never done, like go to NLC, because I don't see, I find more value in being able to contact legislators here. And I think that we ought to do that whole process a lot differently. But I don't take that away from anybody else, because they say that's important to them. So I wouldn't want to say you can't go to CML, or you can't be on their meeting, or you can't get reimbursed for your mileage, or traffic, or lunch for that meeting, because that's part of your, doing your job. So I do want to be cognizant of that we are very aware and have an agreement of how we all do this. I'm not going to start joining some competition on how we can bare bones in. There are people here that make six figures, I don't. I don't. And nor in the future do I want to make sure that anybody who is short of means becomes unable to do council, as of the position I was before with my son, that we can't have people who are poor be council members. So I want to be very careful about how we do this. I don't want to cut anybody short from being able to do their job, or start going into other issues that have been touched on before, on how we do our job or not. I do want as much of the funding to come from council as possible, if that we can. But it is also the job of the city to do elections too, so I don't think it's an all or nothing thing here. And I'm not in a competition of austerity with anybody, because I believe there becomes a point where you stop being able to do your job. I mean, we had council members send out notices to the community. I mean, that may be something that's very important to do at some point, and I would never want to make sure that that was drained prior to knowing that some issue came up. However, we don't know how much it's going to be. So before we start having the...
Mitty gritty.
I mean, and when is that, what's the timeline for where you think that some real hard numbers can be kind of discussed here, before we...
We'd need to bring something forward to you if we're going to be making any agreement on expenditures with an outside group, or even, even bringing in our former city clerk from somewhere in the next couple of weeks. Because there will be petitions, people will be picking up petitions for signatures, and then our staff would be required to do the requisite review and make sure their District 1 voters and residents and all that stuff. So we have to have our plan together, and I know the city clerk and the deputy will be working diligently over this week to get those things nailed down.
Right, but right now, you know, it's a lot of speculation.
It is.
And I want to be very careful, because that puts, that puts pressure on people, and I don't want to, I don't want to try and do that either.
Yeah, they're stressed.
So, we could talk about it next Monday, or...
I would hope so, Tuesday, yeah.
Tuesday, sorry, okay.
We'd happy, happy to talk with you Monday too, but yeah, I think Tuesday we'll have those numbers.
It won't be, sorry.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Olson?
I wanted to say that I am really supportive of getting someone like a Lou Ellis, or somebody who is very familiar with this, to help with the staffing of it, because it's an extra burden that we have chosen to take. And I'm willing to spend down council budgets to the nature that we need to. Food thing keeps coming up over and over, it has since day one. I didn't even know that I got fed at this meeting when I first started in 2009. I thought it was odd that I was getting fed even. And then I realized, oh my goodness, I don't think I would eat if they didn't feed me. And I've said all along, I will pay for it, I don't mind doing that. So I'm sure that all of us have things like that, that some we use, some we don't. We denied an NLC admission last week, and we didn't really talk that through very well, because some people think that's an important thing to go to. So maybe we all need to just think through, where are we willing to cut some things and let you know? But it is like bending over pennies to dollars to pick up pennies.
Tripping over dollars to pick up pennies.
Tripping over, I don't use that term very often, so I, I'm always looking for money somewhere. And I don't want this to be that you have to, I mean, one of the ways our council is set up is that everyone has the opportunity to serve, and anything that allows for that to make it, make everybody productive needs to be. But maybe there's just, there's a short-term thing we're going to do. We just don't, it doesn't mean it's gone forever, we're going to reinstate everything and go back to where we were. I'm afraid that we might be thinking of some of these things like that, that, oh, let's just get this out of there. Doesn't have to be like that.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Wink?
Thank you. I just want to say, we just had a discussion from number Berentine about not denying any of us the opportunity to do what we feel needs to be done, to perform our duties here, and bringing up that she wouldn't deny anyone NLC attendance. When last week, we skipped the fact that one person, which was me, had registered, I think as soon as the city sent it, it was maybe December, I don't know, I mean, immediately, December, it said, and registration was purchased, and the hotel was paid, and, and then there wasn't even an opportunity to have a discussion, because let's just cut it, and there was a very adamant discussion about it. So I think it's, let's, let's decide how we're going to manage these processes, and let's, let's be consistent in our statements. If we, if we don't want someone who feels strongly that, you know, we all have different opinions, and we are six, and we are individuals, and the differences of our opinions are what make this group and our decisions rich and fruitful for the community. And so if one person is very loud and adamant about their decision not to do something, whereas the others might have other opinions, I think it's important for us to keep that in mind. I, as a new member, feel that I could, from everything I read, draw a benefit, and all of the different individuals in the city and other cities, I could draw a benefit from attending the conference, and I felt that that was the reason why city staff sent us the invitation in the first place. And so I said, yes, I want to learn at this point in my career, I want to learn, and so I said, please, but if I don't go, I'm certainly not going to die. But it was something I felt was beneficial. Whether other people think it's absolutely a waste of time is certainly okay as well. But if we're allowing all of us to still make decisions about what we need to, or we feel we need in order to perform our duties properly, then let's do that. If not, then let's not do that. Does that make sense?
Okay, fine. Yes, I appreciate that. And there's going to be more opportunity to speak about that as well, so, thank you. Thank you.
I would like to add something to what Councilmember Wink has said. The only difference with something like NLC and even CML is that those have, they come back to council to be voted on for the expenditure. And so while you may have been, Councilmember Wink misled in that the staff was inviting you, that's still an expenditure that has to come back before the council to, every year, we vote on whether who's going to go and how much money we're putting out for that. That's just a normal part of that.
Only commenting on the fact that you said we should all do what we are doing that's good for our, our careers here. That was the point I'm making, not any other point, just that point. Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. There are certain expenditures that get, we all end up voting on, and so it always could be that the council would vote down five people going, and only three could go, or two could go, or whatever. So it's not a given in some of those situations, and I know just being new that you might not have realized that. And part of the other discussion then is on some of those... And part of the other discussion, then, is, um, on some of those, um, meetings and trips, was, um, the purpose of going, and then the requirement of, um, during that voting process, of whether people were gonna go or not, because it had to be approved, um, what they would come back with, or agreements. Um, and I think some of the discussion happened that maybe we should have a little bit more, um, in-depth conversation prior to somebody going on exactly what they were gonna be getting out of it in that expenditure of taxpayer money, um, what that's for. So, there might just have been some, um, misunderstanding on your part that I didn't see that as a normal- I didn't see that- I didn't see that NLC or the CML piece as a given that we go, because council votes on that as a whole, on whether we go or not. So, it really isn't a given when we sign up that you're gonna get to go until this council, uh, votes on that. So, I just wanted to, um, um, clear that up. I mean, there isn't- all of the council gets dinner and all of the- I mean, there's certain things that just kind of happen as a- as a matter of work. We don't vote every week whether we're gonna get dinner or not.
Okay. We just end- no, I think- I think we got it.
Okay.
I think we got it.
I'm- I just- it wasn't-
Okay, thank you.
I don't think it was intended for any one person.
We got it.
Okay, um, council member-
I don't understand why you're making me feel uncomfortable with that. I mean, I-
You- you do post ten minutes on this, and it's not, I think-
No, I didn't speak for ten minutes on it.
Okay, let's move on. Council member Wink, do you have something else you'd like to share right now, or?
Oh, no, I think I forgot. Thank you.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um, okay, so, there's one other thing that I wanna bring up, and it's the goal-setting piece, and I asked everybody. I haven't sent it in. I did it today. I am sending it in. I would encourage you to, because, um, and I will- I will send out an email. I'll include mine to put what I- it's- a lot of it fits in with the things that we've already been talking about, so I just would encourage us to-
Have all of us sent it in?
I- I just received two.
I've been working on a draft. I've got it in my draft now. I'll get it over to you.
Okay, great. And mine would've come in today.
We're gonna rush, so.
We talked about it.
We got to tomorrow.
There's no rush, member Questa. Uh, if you send it to me tomorrow, I have the spreadsheet bill incorporating them.
Okay, all right. Thank you. So, I just wanted to encourage you to do that. Um, okay, council members' choice. Or did you wanna say something-
I have a question on that.
Okay.
So, when are we gonna be discussing those goals?
So, the 26th of February, that's two weeks from now. Um, you have your goal-setting, and then also strategy. Uh, Mr. Wolf will hopefully be, um, pulling together all the comments that you've made to him on your one-on-one meetings on strategy. I know somebody have a sick, and that's totally fine.
I invited him over to my house if he wanted to be germed on, but he decided he'd rather wait one more week.
You're a smart man. But, yeah, well, the 26th will be when that will be discussed.
So, just, are we gonna be talking about the overarching thing that, um, Mr. Wolf has been working on first, and then our goals?
Yes.
And then we're gonna get a copy of what everyone submitted for their goals?
Yes. You'll get both. You'll get a copy of everybody's goals, as well as everybody's strategic themes woven together.
Okay, good. I would just like to see it in that order, what we've already worked on, and then what our new goals are.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. Um, council members' choice. Would someone like to start? Council member Martinez?
Since I'm talking a lot right now. Um, so, a couple of things. Once, uh, the Culture Arts Commission meeting last week was great, and we had the executive director of the Colorado Creative Industries come talk to us, um, so that was really interesting. We learned a lot. Um, really looking forward to, um, seeing what other programs they have to offer. They offer a, um, kinda DIY for cities if they're not- if they're not quite ready to meet the criteria for that. So, the Culture Arts Commission is gonna be looking through some other kind of how-to-on-our-own type of things, so that will be interesting. Um, they also are working on, in conjunction with the library board, the, um, I'm drawing a blank on what the program is called, but having the art, um, in the library from local artists, and they already have a schedule booked out for a year of artists who wanna display in the library, so that's awesome. Um, and, uh, the- the Culture Arts Commission was talking about their, uh, budget for the year, and what they wanna spend their budget dollars on, and, um, I reminded them that in the 3400 block of Broadway, there is an allocation of $50,000 for the potential of some art on the 3400 block. That is essentially their entire year's budget, and they have a lot they want to do on it. So, um, I said I would come and ask council, um, what your feelings are on that. I said probably they can still make recommendations, but I'd like to see some other art there on that block in addition to the mural that's already there. Um, if they do, I think they can come and present the ideas to council, but, um, I wanna see if also they think that mural is sufficient, and not to spend any more money if council is okay with that as well. And that's all.
Okay.
Are you asking? Kristoff, are you just reporting?
Kind of both. I just wanna- I said I would bring it to council and see what the temperature is for, you know, separate art there, 'cause I know that $50,000 isn't gonna be spent on anything else other than art. Um, so, and that mural is a pretty big, uh, art installation there already, so.
So, does staff have, um, input in what they want to do with the-
No, we actually were hopeful that the Cultural Arts Commission would choose any public art that would be present there, uh, in that- on that particular block, and where it would be placed. That was the intention, uh, that was brought forward in 2017 as part of the Broadway Improvement Project.
But not to pay for it? Just to pick it?
Uh, no, we wanted them to pay- to pay for it as well. That was the 1% arts. I mean, that- that was- that was then Mayor Jefferson's thought. I don't know if he wanted a bronze of himself or what, but-
I don't know, but I left enough to them to recommend.
We just spent any money we could use for them.
I just told them I would leave- it's up to them to recommend, but I wanted to just revisit that with this council before I go back and tell them, no, you have to spend, you know, $50,000 on a piece of art on that block, which would be their- their whole budget, so.
Okay, thank you. Council member Olson, did you wanna-
I guess my question is, can we ever- how much does art cost for the amount?
Well, it varies a lot based on what they recommend. Um, you know, a big, huge sculpture would be $30,000.
Yeah, that's what the one at Kent Place was.
But there's a lot of other options, um, you know? And that mural, I can't remember what that cost. That was mostly funded by, um, using Roger Arts.
Yeah.
But it was like, I wanna say like $12,000, $20,000?
It was 12, yeah. Yeah.
So.
All right, thank you. Um, council member Questa, did-
You bet. Uh, there is a Jason Park Forum Thursday in this room at 7:00 PM, 7:00 to 9:00 PM. Uh, so they're gonna overhaul the playground. My three and six-year-old love the Jason Park Playground. I'm glad they're overhauling it. I think it's gonna work. Um, so they're gonna present a bunch of designs, and, uh, people can choose, weigh in, which is awesome. I'm gonna take my daughter's. I think they're gonna love it. So, that is 7:00 to 9:00 on Thursday evening.
Okay. Thank you very much. Council member Berentine?
If, um, to what, um, council member Olson brought up before, if- if there's any boards or commissions that anybody can't attend or do anything, I know you've offered before and built in for other people, if we could kind of, um, let each other know ahead of time so that we could fill in, 'cause I know when, um, when we're missing, um, from some of these, that it- it affects, especially when we have new members coming in. Um, so, if we could have some way of- of, um, communicating, or some hub that we could do to, um, say, hey, if anybody- if somebody can't attend theirs, that maybe somebody else could fill in, and what that would look like, that's-
Okay.
That's okay.
All right, thank you. Council member Olson?
Yeah, we need to stop having meetings on Tuesday nights to take us out of some of the meetings that we're supposed to have.
Stop having holidays.
Yeah, stop having holidays. Just not have council that way. Um, so, uh, my time is getting kicked by Dr. Gog right now, and it is definitely a big commitment. You start at 6:00, goes till 9, 10, on one-
That's twice a month now, right?
Yeah, and then the other month, it's like 4 to 6. It can be longer for, uh, kind of a study session like what we do. But very enlightening, and I think there are some new things that are gonna come, and so I am gonna talk with Eric a bit here about some of the things with the sub-region opportunities that might exist. There- there probably will be a sub-region meeting of council members in our sub-region to look at projects, and it should be- should be helpful, I think. Um, I'm hopeful that there are things that we can do together, but we'll see how it turns out. And it's definitely a feeling of really wanting to make sure that sub-regional concepts are developed and innovated, so we can talk some more about-
Sure.
I mean, I don't know what I'm doing yet, so.
Okay, thank you. And council member Wink, I- and I just wanna preface this. I, um, she has asked, um, if she could go herself and pay the $3,000, and I, um, so I- and I want, um, you to talk about that a little bit, and, um, so, I didn't mean to steal your thunder, but I'd- I asked you to bring it to council tonight to, um, ask their thoughts on, um-
Thanks. Can I give my update first?
Yes.
Thank you. Um, so, just a quick update on the Budget Advisory Committee. Um, some real positive, um, movement is happening with that group in terms of involvement of all members. So, there were a couple of newer members. It started right around November, I think, when Mr. Questa and I took, um, took our places on this- on this team. And, um, this is strictly opinion, but that group seems to have been led by two main people doing most of the work and leading most of the discussions, so it's really wonderful now that new members are stepping up and offering, and just playing more of an integral role. So, it's always good. Um, you know, I enjoyed seeing a lot of that happen on Cultural Arts Commission, and- and I think it's just been really great to see fresh ideas and fresh energy coming from more than just two members of BAC, so I look forward to seeing what good work comes out of it. I just thought I wanted to share that with you all.
So, were there new members appointed this last time?
No, not this last time, um, but members that were sort of new when I started.
Okay. All right, great.
Yeah, I thought it was great. So, I- I thought you suggested that I bring this tonight, and I didn't know you- it was really a request. I wasn't planning on saying anything, really.
Well-
I just thought professionally it would be a supportive thing, and I- I- we seem to- had been planning on discussing since one person asked, and of course, it's- so, it's okay. I- I'm actually okay not going. I'm okay. Uh, I definitely want us to- to cut where possible, um, as a group for- in support of the election that we now must have, so, um, I wanted to ask, I posed that question to you and to manager Keck as, um, just- just to be transparent and to- to make it known, would this be okay with you? Uh, because what if I- what if I did? So, the registration's paid, the hotel, what if I were to cover all of it and then go? And I didn't want it to seem like I was slinking around behind after the great, nobody goes, and running off and doing his thing, but, um-
Are you still thinking you want to do that? I mean, I just- the only reason I was asking you to bring it to all of council, because you would still represent us, um-
Exactly, right? Yeah, exactly. Exactly. Um, so, either way, I- I'm open. I mean, also going there means, I think, I would miss a meeting, 'cause I think it overlaps on one Monday.
And it would be a study session.
Yes, a study session.
So, you know?
So, are you still thinking you would like to go, or are you thinking-
My reasons for wanting to go haven't changed from back in December when I read about it.
Okay, and- and so, I'm- is- is it okay with everyone if, um, she chooses to go?
And- and pay her own way? I wouldn't even think that'd be an issue. But it's nice to know that you would. I mean, I can see why you would wanna tell us, 'cause it could come back to be weird.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. I mean, yeah.
Thank you. Um, council members, do you-
I was gonna say, I would, of course, am supportive if you'd like to go. However, I think paying out of pocket is a lot of money for that, so I would, um, any way that we could figure out a way to send her if she really wants to go. Um, I know, it sounds like you guys registered in December. This was well in advance before we made this decision to go to a special election. Um, and we didn't really have this conversation that night when we talked about it, and I feel like we probably should have, um, because I really wasn't aware. Um, it said one person wanted to go, but we didn't really discuss that, so I would prefer that we talk about somehow that, um, council member Wink is able to go, but doesn't have to pay that whole thing out of pocket.
Council member, I mean, city manager. It's late.
Don't take offense.
I- I'm not gonna be attending the International City Management Annual Meeting this year. It's in Baltimore, and I don't wanna to go for a number of reasons. Um, so, I'll ha- I have $1,500 that if- if the council doesn't mind, I would give to member Wink to attend that meeting if she feels so strongly about the training from- from my budget. I mean, it's not the whole amount, but it helps.
I would only like to have the same criteria for anybody that represents us, and that's that all of the years that we've- that have been involved, we at least expect some kind of report back on what- what's happened.
Wow. Yeah, okay, and that's not a problem, right?
Yeah, that's written in the-
Yeah, but not everybody does it, and it's not necessarily held accountable for, so-
Oh, is it, right?
Yeah.
Well-
I'm accustomed to doing it.
Not very positive.
But it isn't. It's true. But I do believe that council member Olson did do her report from the last time when she went to NLC. I do believe that you might have been the only one who did. I did appreciate it.
I am sure it is.
And I- it just wasn't the biggest issue to deal with at the time, to hold everybody accountable, but I do remember that you did, and it's important. And I really- I really think it's very important to have some expectation about what you're kinda doing ahead of time, moving forward from now- now forward, especially when- when we have newer people that, you know, that they have some idea of what to expect. So, if we could get some kind of, um, if you would mind, council member Wink, would you mind being able to give us some report on- on your trip? It would be very helpful.
Absolutely. I- I go to conferences every day for my career, and-
If I had heard that answer, I wouldn't have asked. I apologize for that.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Okay.
Expected.
So, um, and I think this is probably something that we might be able to discuss even more after we have the final amount that it is gonna cost for, um, the election. I mean, it is possible that it won't be exorbitant. So, I am, you know, all for covering the rest of the cost if there is-
Can we find out what the cost is for some-
Well, that's what I just said.
It's $3,000.
$3,000, yeah.
$3,000.
Right, so, all right.
And is- the registration's already paid for and is non-refundable, anyway, right? Or is it registration-
It may be refundable, 'cause we did the early bird, but-
Oh, okay, okay.
Yeah.
'Cause I think at least I wouldn't want her to pay the money.
What'd you do if council didn't approve it?
We'd re- we'd ask-
Well, never mind. I don't wanna have the discussion right now.
We'd ask for reimbursement.
Okay, all right. Um, any other- oh, city manager?
I just have one item. Um, and on Thursday, February 22nd, you may have seen the e-notifier, the Energy Efficient Inglewood will be having the 2018 E3 Summit. Um, again, this is a meeting that's set up, uh, in partnership with Excel Energy to help both residents and businesses look at ways in which to save money. Um, so, we'll have a lot of, um, resources there. It's here in this room in the community center, or community room, at 6:00 PM.
Okay, thank you. Uh, nothing for the city attorney. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you all very much.
I was in DC for two nights. Just two nights. Is that crazy?